Hi, everyone.
Hi, everyone. Hi, Debbie.
Hi, Debbie.
Hello, Debbie.
How are you doing, Paul? Feeling okay?
I get tired a little easy, but it's been two and a half weeks, so I'm not contagious, but it was not much to start with.
Glad you're feeling better.
Thank you. Well, if I'm gonna have a flu, this is the one I'd want to have, if I have to have one.
We missed the one person that some just pulled in, so pause it here for a second.
Has anyone read any good books lately?
I fell asleep and started drooling.
We'll call this meeting to order, is the town council meeting for Town of Apple Valley. It is January 20th, 2021, at 6:00 PM, if we can all rise.
Thank you, everybody. Justice for
Welcome, everybody, to our meeting. We normally have an agenda that's, you know, slipped in there. This is our agenda tonight. I don't know if I can look at both at the same time. This is literally all the stuff we're gonna go through tonight, so we'll get started. I'm gonna ask for a real call right now. Quite a quick off point here.
Debbie.
Paul Edwards in here.
And Marty Wilson B. here. And we wish Paul the best, he's had COVID in his family, so glad you could feel well enough to join us. And declaration of any conflicts of interest on anything that's going on in the town or on the agenda?
Nope.
Nope, no?
No.
That's enough, Paul, I can see him shaking his head.
Nope.
On Mayor's town update of Russell Wood, what to chat about, I think I'm gonna not chat it all right now. Might fail and compel it a little bit later, so. Sunrise Engineering, are they online? Yeah, Fred. Online, Marv. So, we're gonna have a sunrise to the engineering impact fee study, they're gonna go over the analysis that they have. And that'll be in part one, did you bring your book with you?
Actually, I left my book from my wife right home, give it to her.
Oh. That's the attorney, so we'll, as soon as he shows up. He should be here, Paul, I think he's online, he's in person. They have a new mayor in St. George, and he was attending a farewell. It was at four o'clock, so. For Tom Pike. Anyway, so he'll be here. But meantime, I'm gonna turn this over to Marv and Fred.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Mayor. Well, we'll do this sort of similar to what we did when we presented to the council before. Nate will present the impact fee facilities plan.
Need to speak up a little bit more, Marv, we can't hear you very well.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now? We will, we'll follow the same procedure we did a couple of months ago when we presented it for your information. We'll have Nate present the impact fee facilities plans, and then we'll have Fred Philpot with Louis Young present the impact fee analysis. And is that okay?
Fine.
All right, okay, Nate, go ahead.
Okay. So, as far as the impact fee analysis that were performed for Apple Valley, we had four different plans. There was a parks and recreation plan, a roadway and facilities plan, a storm and water infrastructure plan, and a public safety plan. And kind of the purpose of each of these plans is, as new growth comes in, the new growth is there to help pay for the, I guess you'd say, they pay for improvements that will be needed because of the growth. And so, each of these plans projected out a population, and based off of that population, we had certain improvements that would need to be made to the town that would be deemed impact fee eligible. So I'm gonna go through the first of those plans, and that was the parks and recreation plan. Let me see if I can share my screen here. Okay, is that working, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so this is the, the existing Apple Valley Parks and Recreation Plan. And I have it scrolled here in particular, just to show the current level of service. Currently, Apple Valley has the Apple Valley Volunteer Park, which is shown here down in blue. And, and what we did was we compared that level of service, say the population right now has so many acres per square foot, or each person relates to an amount of area. And in the future, there's gonna be more people, and so we equated that over to some new growth that would be added on, and shown in the screen section. So the impact fee calculates what would it would cost to improve this area of the park, as well as a all-purpose trail that comes from the end of Rome Way and goes over to Main Street. So those are two of the, the improvements that were discussed for the Parks and Recreation Facility Plan. I'm gonna go to the roadway plan now. For the roadway plan, same, same type of thing, we, we talked with the mayor and we figured out where new growth is going to come into the town. And we made, are we, came up with improvements for each of those areas of the town. We know that there's a lot of proposed development up in the, in the Gooseberry area and potentially throughout, and so Main Street was one of the, the improvements that was put into place. We also have the SR 59 Main Street Intersection improvements coming online soon. Cannonway down here, there will be more people building there. Apple Valley Drive roadway improvements over here, and the Apple Valley, yeah, the Apple Valley way improvements. So, those were some of the roads that we talked about. This, this avenue by way improvements was already previously constructed, that's the bridge area. And that is impact fee eligible for the amount of money that the, the town still owes on it. And Fred will go over that in his analysis. And then, finally, we have the storm drain, or the stormwater master plan. And this, this went through the whole town, found areas that that were deficient in service, and and different improvements, and you can see there's culverts that need upsized throughout all of town. A lot of the borrowed ditches in the town currently are not capable of holding the, the water and the flows that we're seeing come through there. So we have a lot of those ditches being upgraded. Over on the east side of town, we can kind of see there's a lot of little natural drains that all converge right around this cul-de-sac and, and cause a lot of flooding there, so we have improvements in place that route the floods, so they don't take out this, this cul-de-sac and flood that any longer. As far as the public safety plan, I know that Fred Philpot, he has completed that one, so he can talk more on that and on the financials. But as far as those plans, does anyone have any questions on, on any of those plans?
I think it would be helpful if you could explain, maybe this is the right time, maybe it's not, but when we have the, you know, Gooseberry Mesa different roads like that, so there are Smithsonian and so forth, that are all dirt roads, why aren't they not included in these projections?
Marv, were you guys?
I want you to explain.
Yeah, so the impact fee facilities plan is, and Nate mentioned a little earlier, the impact fees can only be spent for not, you can't increase your level of service. And so if there's an existing need somewhere, that's not impact fee eligible. There's a lot of roads that you can, that are gonna be needed to be improved between now and then, in a hundred years in in Apple Valley, not that we'd do an impact fee facilities plan for a hundred years, but there's a lot of roads that need to be improved, but we, but they if the need is there now, then you can't charge for an impact fee, so there was a lot of existing needs that we really didn't show, the only the only roads and improvements on all those that, that were shown were those that were at least partially impact fee eligible. That's not saying that this is a perfect plan, because you can have a, for instance, you could have a developer come in and a wholly, in a completely new area that we weren't planning on, and, and need a road and need all the infrastructure out there to serve them. Then, and it's not included in this plan, at that juncture, if it's not a normal time to renew the plan, you would have to amend the plan to include those, those needs, which is, which is very doable. Client, our clients do that on a frequent basis, some of them that are growing rapidly do that more, more often than, than not with some of their impact fee facilities plans, so. I think the question was, why would you maybe do? Mayor, you asked me the other day on the, on the Cannon one versus the up on north, up north of town. We've taken a wide brush and, and identified the, the Apple Valley corporate boundaries as the boundaries of the improvements, and so everything inside that, we're gonna look at it and then divide it by the num, the growth within that, and average it out over, over the entire community, and that's maybe that's the best way of doing it, given the size of Apple Valley and, and the growth of the community. It's not perfect, and when, if it becomes really apparent that there's some inadequacies or injustices there, then, then we would recommend that we, that we amend the impact fee. But right now, we're doing, doing the best we can with the information provided. I don't know whether that's a very good answer for you, Mayor, but that's
Marv, I think you've done a great job speaking like an engineer. I get the same stuff when I talk to the attorney. You know, when you ask a question, and when you're all done, you're kind of shaking your head like, did he answer my question? So I'm gonna give you a little different take on it, basically, the Gooseberry Mesa area is an example, is we have other areas just like that, that are, would also qualify our existing roads, and they have existing surface level. In other words, they're not chip seal, they're not blacktop, they're just what they are. And that's a service level right now, and when we look at it, impact fee eligible roads and so forth, we have to establish what is the level of service right now. And so I can't take impact fee money, for example, and go and pave Gooseberry Mesa Road. It has to be on other roads that is in our plan that we can, that we're planning on expanding on.
Right.
And
For example, right, Mayor, that's, that's correct, you can't increase the level of service, for example, we looked at Main Street, which we have in there, the pavement of it, but only the only, the only reason that that might be impact fee eligible, that it is impact fee eligible is because it will increase the capacity of the road. And, and the equation
We have to widen and
Yep. It's, it's not a hundred percent impact fee eligible because of that.
I appreciate it. Anything else you'd like to go over? Anything else, Marv or Nate?
No, unless you have some questions, some specific questions. We have, we have, Fred is on the line, and he's ready to, he's ready to go over the financial side of this and, and the calculations.
Questions right now, there, Marv and Nate, anybody on the council have any questions?
No, sir.
I don't.
All right, so let's go ahead and start with Fred.
All righty. Thank you, everyone, for letting me join you this evening, I'm gonna go ahead and share the screen here.
Speak up, Fred.
All righty. Let's see. All righty, can you see my screen here, this presentation?
Yeah.
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 Okay. Let's go to reading. All righty. As has been discussed, there, there are two documents that, that are part of this process that we go through for any impact fee. The completion of an impact fee facilities plan, which Marv and Nate went through. And that identifies the capital facility needs, and then there's the impact fee analysis, which conducts the proportionate share analysis, so Utah is governed by the Impact Fee Act, which dictates how we should look at impact fees and what elements are included in the IFFP and IFA. And that culminates in a proportionate share analysis, which is just a big word for division, we're, we're basically taking these costs and, and dividing it amongst the demand variables, both existing and future demand to ensure that there's an equitable or fair distribution of those costs to new development, because they want to be ensured that they're not paying more than their fair share. If that happens, as Marv indicated, an adjustment needs to be made to the impact fee, or they, you know, they would potentially challenge the impact fees and sue, sue the town and, and say, we're, we're paying too much. So we go through this process to try to allocate costs proportionately, recognizing that we can never be perfect, we just have to be reasonable, and, and the code and case law protects the town from that perspective. In essence, ensuring that as long as we use reasonable assumptions, we're, we're good to go. This is the process, we're at the tail end here, the public hearing, which was a continuation of our December meeting. So, we're continuing that public hearing, and then any increase to the impact fee, there's a ninety-day wait period before you can assess that, so that's important to keep in mind, it does allow development to come in under the old, old schedule and potentially pay the impact fees and, and get their building permits before there's an increase. There's many steps that we went through prior to this with regards to completing documents and, and meeting with staff and but we're here at the tail end, at the adoption point. So looking at it generally, we looked at the city as a whole, the, the town as a whole, as Marv mentioned. The demand variables that we looked at are population, households, acres, trips, and single-family equivalents. So, the, the reason why there's a lot of variables there is every facility that we looked at, there's a different demand variable associated with that type of service, and so we're evaluating it relative to the demand variable that's most applicable for that, for that service, so typically, population and households is what we use for parks and recreation. Trips and single-family equivalents are for transportation. Acres for your storm impact fee. And, uh, single-family equivalents is what we use for our fire, absent of call data, better call data, so we had to use the data that was available for the, the fire element. Uh, we did look at your existing facilities, so, as Marv mentioned, there's some capacity in existing facilities that the IFFPs identified, as well as fire facilities that we've included. And we have to be careful that we exclude any non-city funded elements. And then the level of service is also specific to each of the elements that we looked at. Again, for parks and recreation, as Nate mentioned, it's let's see, is the acreage per capita. For fire, we, we looked at building square footage, whoops, sorry about that. Building square footage and developed and undeveloped land. And then trips for transportation, and, and looking at the level of service variables for each of those facilities that were evaluated. So bringing all that together, again, this is the essence of the proportionate share analysis, it's taking all of the costs that were identified in the IFFP and allocating it to the demand variable. And then we look at establishing a fee schedule by land use. And, and we have to make some assumptions and projections with regards to future development, which is, again, why Marv indicated that impact fees are not a static process, as, as you march forward in time. You typically have to review these documents and potentially update them, we typically recommend at most a five-year, you know, period where, where these can sit, but many entities will do it every three years, we'll look at them, just make sure they're still relevant. Now, that doesn't suggest that you have to go through this full process every, every review, but you should be looking at them to make sure that the assumptions are still relevant and reasonable. And when you have anything that deviates from that, then that may trigger an update, and again, that can happen in one year, that can happen in three years. We, we just need to stay on top of that, so the city is protected from future challenges. Uh, but then when, when we look at the proportionate share analysis, you can see here, I've broken it out by single-family, multifamily, and then we have some non-residential uses, where we made some projections for those based on the single-family equivalents that were identified in transportation, but the park impact fee as, was calculated to be $725 per dwelling unit. Fire for single families, eight forty-four, I'll, I'll just go across the top for the single-family dwelling, that's what most typically look at, but fires is eight forty-four, which is an increase from your current fee, a pretty big increase. Transportation is $2,660, also a fairly big increase, and then stormwater, $1,443. That assumes a half-acre lot, since it is on a, based on the acreage of the, the development. Uh, but I, I just assumed a, a half-acre lot. And then down below, I provided an illustration of a single-family versus a multifamily property or, or type of development, and a summary of your proposed fees and your existing fees, since you have a culinary water and a sewer fee, to illustrate the percentage change and the dollar change, so a single family is projected to go up by almost $5,000, which is approximately a hundred and fifty percent increase. Uh, multifamily is slightly lower at almost $4,000, or a hundred and thirty percent increase, so some big, big jumps in the proposed fees. That, that's primarily driven, a lot of that is driven by the transportation element and the storm element, and those capital projects that have been identified in the IFFP, and then allocating it to the demand variables that were, were evaluated, so. That provides a summary, what I, what So, um, that provides a summary. What I, what I wanted to stress, again, because we, we looked at the fire, uh, facilities and evaluating what, what that might, might look like, we're basically projecting a total of a million dollars worth of future investment in the next 10 years towards your fire facilities, which includes about 400,000 for, uh, new station, uh, expansion, square footage expansion, um, as well as $650,000 for an app, piece of apparatus. Uh, the, the Impact Fee Act, uh, only allows us to, to charge that to, uh, non-residential development. So you can see the non-residential fees here are substantially high. I mean, they're, they're basically, we're taking a small denominator, uh, element of demand and taking that 650,000 and, and trying to spread, uh, nearly half of that across, um, potential future commercial development. So it's pushing that fee really high. What it means for the town is, is in essence, we're, we're basically committing to expanding your fire facilities and acquiring apparatus, you know, spending over a half a million dollars on, on new apparatus and then charging that, uh, half of that in the impact fee. Where we can get into trouble is if we include this and say, yes, that's what we're going to do, and then you don't actually do that. Or, uh, you know, in our last meeting, uh, Mayor, you had mentioned that, and, and some, some of our other, the other discussions, there could be alternative funding mechanisms that are used to expand your fire facilities and apparatus. In which case, um, we would, again, would, we would be charging too much in our impact fee because you're getting fu- funds somewhere else other than, uh, from your residents. Uh, and the impact fee law requires us to consider that and remove that from the calculation of the impact fee. So I provided for your benefit, uh, you know, as you're weighing these, these options here, uh, what it looks like for those non-residential, if you remove the apparatus. So it's, you, you still keep in that 400,000 to try to expand your, your facility space, your, your actual brick and mortar space. Uh, but we remove that apparatus component. You can see the fees are decreased substantially. It's, it's really all driven by that. So we go from 32,000 for your typical shopping center or, or general commercial, down to $2,369. So it's a, it's a big shift. Again, the, the reason why I highlight that is just to, to, to stress in your minds, this, this idea that if, if that apparatus isn't a reality, then it could create some challenges where development in the future, non-residential development could say, hey, wait a minute, I paid a lot of money for this impact fee and, and we didn't spend that on, on what you said you were going to spend it on. So they would be entitled to reimbursement, uh, under that situation. That doesn't change the single-family and multifamily, so that, that stays constant again, because that apparatus is only assessed to the non-residential development. So that, that's why the shift is really happening there. Uh, the, the, the liability, I guess, is, you know, we're not really projecting a whole lot of commercial growth, at least in the 10-year planning horizon, but there is some risk there. So again, that provides a summary. This is what the report shows. With regards to the maximum allowable, allowable impact fee based on the assumptions that were used. This provides you that alternative scenario. Uh, as a legislative body, uh, you have the option to adopt, modify, or reject. So those, uh, two clauses there of modify or reject, um, you can, you can modify below what that maximum was. Again, that's that second scenario of saying, okay, if we didn't, if we didn't have that apparatus cost, um, you could modify the impact fee below that, that proposed amount. Or you can, you know, there's, there's nothing that requires you to assess impact fees, so, so you can reject them altogether. But the, the outcome of that is you, you know, those costs don't go away. So you have to, you have to identify some other funding mechanism if you don't assess impact fees or your level of service will decrease over time. So that's the trade-off of rejecting impact fees. And again, there's a 90-day wait period before you can, you can implement, um, or assess any increase that we're proposing here. So that's a, a quick run-through. Um, I'm happy to, to dive in deeper, take questions and, and talk through this with you.
Questions for anybody? Debbie, Paul?
No.
I have, I have one, and I kind of don't actually have it. With the impact fees, like with our agenda coming up here next, we're talking about creating, uh, special districts to take in taxes to build that, that subdivision. So how is that affected by the impact fees?
Yeah, so I saw that on your agenda. You're contemplating a, a PID, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so if you're, if you establish another mechanism to fund infrastructure, and in, in essence, a PID, you're, uh, you're, you're building infrastructure with a new levy, with a new tax levy. So if you are taking some of this infrastructure and are going to fund it, let's say roads, for example, if there's some of these roads that you're gonna say, let's, let's do a PID with this, then our impact fees are overstated because you're, you're going to generate the revenue with your tax levy to fund that infrastructure and then turn around and assess an impact fee. And, and now you've just double-collected, you've double-charged, you're taxing and collecting an impact fee. So what we have to be careful of is if your PID is contemplating funding any of the infrastructure that we've listed here, then, uh, that's where I'd say we have a problem. We, we need to, to reevaluate that and, and say, maybe some of these are no longer impact fee eligible projects.
And Mayor, could I say something?
Yes, please.
Um, Fred, this is Sean Guzman. I know you feel like we're in meetings every other day right now.
Yes.
I just, I, that last point that Fred made, I want to just reemphasize that. And that is, only if the infrastructure that it, that PID is using their bond revenues to construct is on your impact fee facilities plan, do you need to readjust those?
Yes.
Right now, I'm not seeing anything, because all of that is project-based that they're doing. It's because of the project. It's not anything that is system-based. And you wouldn't have known that, Fred, so I just wanted to clarify. So your answer was correct, and I just wanted to say that, um, I'm almost positive that it will not in, impact your fee analysis right now.
And I was thinking similarly, you, I just wanted to hear again, you know, say what I was thinking, but yes, I was wondering if that might.
Yeah, the, the key elements of that are, it has to be identified in the IFFP and that, that delineation between system and project improvements. So it sounds like the PID is funding your project improvements in this specific development and not the system improvement, so we don't have that issue of double char- charging.
And also just to emphasize that they, so every structure built there will pay their appropriate impact fees, just as anywhere else in Apple Valley, if that was created.
Yep.
Fred?
Go ahead.
Fred, this is Del Beto. I was looking back upon your, um, page 12, you've got a, a base asset fee identified for the current structure of about 182,000, which is about $40 a square foot. And I looked at your projections from 2000, currently up to 2021, the year 2029, you've got about a 75% increase for calls for fire. And I'm, and I'm all gonna talk for a minute about fire right now. But yet, on the building improvements and expansion, you've got a 300% increase in cost of construction of the new facilities, which is a big number. Does that include the fire apparatus you're talking about, or are you talking about building structure only?
Um, let me, let's see, so you're, the, the fire facilities that, that we contemplated, uh, were based on your historic calls and that ratio per SFE. So, so we use that to say, okay, we're, based on that, we, we need another 3,000 square feet, a little over 3,000 square feet. You have about 4,500 square feet right now. And so, uh, I assumed an, a cost per square foot of $119, $120, and then inflated that, so there's some inflation baked into that.
Two, sorry, that's a 2.79% a year?
Uh, yes, yeah, 2.79. Yeah, so I, I get that, you know, taking that 3,260 square feet that we projected to maintain your current square footage level of service, um, multiplied by $119 gets me that $387, uh, or sorry, $387,000 in estimated cost, and then construction year cost, it's 400,000, it's, it's about 400,000, which is what is shown. Uh, you're referencing page 12, right? Uh, that's the first line, that's the substation, trying to, you know, get additional square footage, that's the 400,000. And then the apparatus is on top of that, of 650,000, gets us to a million. So it's, it's those two components that are coming into the analysis.
Thank you.
Yeah, so.
So what you're saying is it, uh, okay, we, we build a fire station, basically, and, uh, don't, don't, uh, and can't fund it with impact money if we don't put it, if we don't put it on there.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's a, a little bit of a chicken and the egg, but in essence, it has to be in our plan in order to collect fees for it. But from an impact fee standpoint, we have to have, i- in most cases, we have to have some other way of funding it, at least initially. Um, and then impact fees will continue to pay that back over time. So you, you're not going to collect enough impact fee monies to build this facility upfront or to fund the apparatus, because they come in as development occurs. So, um, entities will get into trouble because they, we, we put all of this in there and say, yes, this is what we're gonna do. But when it comes time to actually funding it, there's no money to do that. And, and that's what I, I worry about with a small town. You know, is honestly, do we have enough revenue to build it upfront and then let the impact fees pay that back over time? If we don't, then, uh, you know, we, we could get ourselves into trouble. You know, where developer, developers come in and say, wait a minute, we've paid too much. And, and that really applies to all of these fees. I mean, we, we have to have a reasonable expectation that we can afford what we're showing in these plans. Otherwise, we, we can't spend the money. I, I'm working with Salt Lake City right now, and you would think, uh, a really large city would have this, uh, all nailed, nailed down, but they, they don't have, a, a lot of times, the political will to fund this infrastructure, so they collect the monies, but there's no way to expend them because we, we can't build the facilities. And so we're having to give money back, and, and it's creating some challenges for them. So I, I just want to try to avoid that if we can.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I understand that. 600,000 for an engine. Between them, there's many households in, in Apple Valley, it's.
Yes, it's a lot.
Okay, thank you.
So again, this was, the, what, what was shown here provided you an alternative scenario to say, okay, if we, if we remove that apparatus, it, it doesn't change the single-family and multifamily, but it does, it does bring your commercial component down. So that, that's what that scenario is presenting.
Right.
I think it's worth, I think it's worth noting as well, Fred, and, and you've already said it, but it's worth repeating. Anything, and it, you can, you can charge up to these numbers. You don't, you're not required to charge these numbers. Just for a little contextual, um, explanation on that, I've been involved with impact fees for, uh, about 25 years now, and I've seen, I've seen the gamut of, of our clients. At first, when impact fees were starting to come into, in, into vogue, we would do the impact fee analysis and the majority of the councils would say, oh man, that's too much, we can't charge that much. We're gonna charge half or a quarter. And we'd say, okay, well, you can, you can do what you want, you just can't charge more. And, um, and that pendulum swung the other way to, when they were starting to, as Fred mentioned, if you don't charge the amount, it, you gotta get the money somewhere to do the improvements. And the, the communities were starting to experience that. And so the, the pendulum swung the other way to where they said, we gotta chart every last penny you tell us we can charge. We're gonna charge. And, uh,
Yeah, we're not giving money back.
Yeah. Then in, uh, 2008, with the recession in 2008, it swung back the other way, where they said, we, they wanted to, incentivize development so much that they, they said, we can't charge anything, so they, they ended up charging less. And now it's, it's somewhere in between, it's going back, I'm just, I'm just giving you a, what your neighbors are tending to do with this information. And, and it's completely up to you. You, you've got the power to choose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I think, uh, if he, it's off the agenda, and you guys, okay, we just, uh, open up for public hearing on this, and if anybody has questions for them, they're here. So let's just open up public hearing for the impact fee, um, plan. Anybody who hasn't even said anything, come up here with all you have and say it. Everybody's here for something else, huh? Anybody online have something they want to say about the impact fees?
Mayor, I think that the residents, some residents, this will have like a hard impact on them. And I don't think that any, I'm gonna say, oh, charge us whatever we need. Most people will be able to function and, and handle it, but it's gonna impact some people adversely.
And, and I don't want to, uh, the council to keep in mind that impact fees are, are an assessment to new development only. So, um, your existing residents don't pay this, um, but you're right. There are affordability concerns that get brought up frequently in these types of meetings and, um, uh, that, that is a concern, but it is, it's only assessed to new development activity, new, new homes and new development.
Well, I also want to add that, um, the calculations done are what it cost us to provide any services. And we can, not having any impact fees at all, and all of us in this room can help pay for all that new development we want. Or we'd let the guy that's building the new development pay for him coming in, which we'd rather do. The, the expenses are still there. It's just a matter of who's gonna pay for it. Do all of us want to pay for the new people coming in? Or we'd rather let them pay for it coming in? And, and that's why, um, discounting it, um, it's not a great idea. Our, these impact fees are, gosh, probably half of what, uh, I mean, St. George's does, or others. Half as much.
At least pay their fair share. I think that's your best thing.
Exactly, exactly. So anyway, that's, uh, that's, that's kind of my take on it, that it's, none of us, um, probably want to write that check to help pay for some of the people that might be coming out, let them write the check and.
Well, sure, I mean, I mean, if, if a developer comes in here, wants to make money, uh, buys a piece of land and wants to develop, the whole point is to make money on that, and, uh, if he wants to take that chance, and, and then he should be, uh, one that's charged for making the improvements to the roadways and everything else. I mean, that's the way, that's the way, uh, developments in cities grow. And we shouldn't be any different.
All right. So what about, what about the long-term? What about the long-term cost of the upkeep for those facilities? Is that something that the developer also pays, or is that something that eventually is gonna have to be distributed across to gain that revenue from the entire town?
Well, from an impact fee standpoint, um, or, or sorry, Sean, where you're gonna.
Hang on one second, if you don't mind, Fred.
Okay.
I think it's Bevan, right?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
So I need anybody that's making a comment to announce your name with that. So that was Bevan Ford. So go ahead, Fred.
Yeah, so Bevan, what you're talking about is definitely an an element that needs to be considered and and that's the operations and maintenance of this infrastructure over time. The impact fee does not include that. The impact fee only includes the capital cost associated with these facilities. The operations and maintenance would be funded by the general fund or utility funds. So it's the answer, I guess, is no, the impact fee doesn't. So entities will have to evaluate long term operational costs, but it's outside of this study.
Just to add to that, this is Marv. If for the only one I'm familiar with that actually helps get get you a few more funds is the roadway. The B and C road funds are are based on on miles of roads and also classification of roads. So you you potentially could get a few more dollars for that operation of maintenance, but everything else, you know, your your hope would be that the growth the the increased revenue in all of your funds from the growth would also on an ongoing basis would be able to handle the upkeep of each facility. Yet we can't you we can't charge. That's one of the parts of the Impact Fee Act is you can't charge operation maintenance as as an impact fee.
But long term, this is Bevan again, you're long term, you're talking about the development potentially offsetting it. What you're talking about, but not guaranteeing that revenue. The concern being that the the town is behind in terms of its ability to maintain the infrastructure currently. So we've just stayed behind the the curve essentially. Perennially.
Yeah.
Most cities, the way they pay those bills, Bevan, is through sales tax. And that takes a building a business someplace in order to collect those sales tax and that's usually where a lot of the funding comes from, you know, salaries to actually do a better job on hiring people and maintaining roads, things like that. Or there's no doubt that our, you know, the amount of money we bring in will change year to year. When we have, you know, fifty building permits in a given calendar year, the revenue we take in is higher. And effectively, without it being in a subdivision, we're talking about the same roads, just people building on those same roads. So that in itself gives us probably extra revenue to help maintain some of those because they entered, you know, now paying fees. So in other words, we have some roads that are just miles long. You know, with three double houses on it. And when there's ten houses on that road, it changes the revenue structure.
Of course, I I understand that. Is there something in the impact fee analysis in relationship to maintenance, especially that hill going up Rome for snow removal? Ice removal? Is that included?
No, no, again, the maintenance, we were prohibited from even considering maintenance as a cost in impact fee analyses. So.
Are you finished, Bevan?
I I at this time, I am, yes. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, I'm Alan Angel. Can somebody describe the exactly when the impact fees are assessed? I'm imagining a scramble during the ninety day period where people are gonna want to pay their fees if they're gonna go up considerably. When exactly are they assessed and can they be paid ahead?
That's town building permit. Plan for building permission.
So people could build full building permits during that ninety day period and not build on anytime within that ninety day?
Well, the building permit itself expires, so I wouldn't recommend it, but. Yeah.
And this is the law all over the state. Typically, we don't see that. In the early years when they first enacted the impact fee statutes, there were some that scrambled to be that. And some cities actually gave a letter of prepay. Nobody does that anymore. It's too hard to track. And and it's too hard usually to get to to purchase the property that you want to build on and then get your building plans in and approved in that ninety day timeframe. So I wouldn't anticipate a rush. However, if you did, you would also get some money right now that you probably would take over, take it longer to.
But there's nothing to prevent somebody. It's just a matter of the budget.
No, and and the law was was structured this way to try to be fair for those that were in the process and have already got their budgets for their home. And then now are faced with increases that they have.
This this is such a hot button issue that it's been on our website for at least two months, maybe three. And I haven't heard one phone call or one email from anybody on it. So I'm not sure why. I thought there'd be some questions that pop up, but I haven't had any inquiries out of it. Anybody else for public comment?
I have a question. Go go back to the road, Ken. Can you hear me? Forrest Keeney. All right, I I understand that we're talking about Main Street. Do I understand that it's going to be paid with chip and seal?
Well, it's, you know, we haven't you know, I guess I can ask what the attorney maybe Fred can tell us what level service or Marv for Main Street.
I I believe that you're right. Nate, will you will you chime in? I think that the the Main Street extension or widening was was a chip and seal. It would, I think it would have been a lot more expensive if we would have went with an asphalt. Nate, will you confirm or deny?
Yeah, it's a double chip seal on six inches of base.
Okay.
That was pretty quiet, Nate. Could you do that one more time with another?
Yeah, it's we've got in the E O P C in the plan. It's a double chip seal with a six inch base.
So that's double chip with six inch base is what his answer was.
You have another question, Forbes?
Uh, well, I'm just questioning whether that's something that we really need. Oh, I guess what I'm saying is what's wrong with the gravel that we're we're experiencing now?
Well, from from the engineer standpoint, with the growth that's projected on the north end, you're you're gonna need safe passing zones. And with the increased traffic, the if you don't double, if you don't put it some kind of a of a surface on it, you'll end up with a a dust bowl. So the the widening would have to happen with or without the double chip. The double chip protects the 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 surface and and keeps your your dust down. It it's definitely a reasonable a reasonable expectation for for that. Growth will cause a lot of traffic on there and it fits the if it's the it fits the mold, the bar for for improvements in an impact fee analysis.
I guess my question is, if there's that much growth, why wouldn't the developer have to pay for that? Or maybe you're saying this is why how they pay for it?
Yes and yes. One of the problems with just charging the developer that entire cost is that the road is so is so long and there's so many other opportunities for other property holders along that Main Street to to benefit from that as well.
I have one more question. One one point eight million, I guess, is what it is, isn't that right?
Yep, that's right.
I have another question about a road. Well, the pictures show a Keenan Way being worked on. I'm not sure I understand that.
That was that was identified as a as a road as in our conversations with staff. That was identified as a road that would tie on to an another future road that that a developer would would be putting in to help the help the traffic flow in that area. It's it's tiny. It's really a small portion of the impact fee. And I don't think the entire, I don't think that entire road was impact fee eligible either. It was just a fraction of the road.
So the work would be on the road that's outside of the existing subdivision?
That's right.
Some road.
I'm not understanding what you're asking, Forrest.
Uh, the 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 picture shows the road being worked on and going over private property of when do we own that road?
There's a just a, I think, a two track along there. And no, we don't own the road and we're not planning on building a road. A developer would likely come in there, charge the impact fees, allow us maybe to spend that money as it comes in for maybe upgrades to that road that we want to have. But it's 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 kind of targeted because there's some possible project out there.
Okay, do you have one more question about borrowed ditches? I was understanding that we could use impact fee to upgrade existing borrowed ditches. And if that's correct, why can't we use impact fees to upgrade existing roads?
So an impact fee could only be charged for existing borrowed ditches if growth would increase the flow, the the runoff flow in those borrowed ditches.
Is there going to be very many ditches that would fall in that criteria?
Most of the borrowed ditches, if I remember right, are are a small ratio of impact fee eligible. So not, there's not a lot of that that falls into that act that criteria. But there is a little bit of increased flow in the borrowed ditches. And so they do have a small portion of impact fee eligibility.
That answers my question. Thanks.
So I have one more question from an engineering standpoint. It seems like if you chip and seal that road, it's gonna be it's gonna develop some, yes, thank thank you, Mayor. It's gonna develop some really bad potholes and difficulties and it's gonna cost more to maintain it. So there's so there been an engineering study about how chip and seal is gonna affect the durability of that road and the cost of upkeep going forward. Once you chip seal it, there's kind of no going back.
We've, there hasn't been a specific study on that. Well, I mean, we've had a lot of experience with chip seal, double chip seal and pave and pavement. We know that a double chip seal will will serve a purpose and is cheaper in in the short term and even a lot of communities, even in Santa Clara City, actually, well, Washington City, almost all the all the cities down here do a do a chip seal maintenance. So if you double chip seal and provide that first layer of of paved surface and you, then you can maintain that every five to ten years with another chip seal. And it takes several rounds of that of of chip sealing before you get to the cost of of four inches of asphalt. So or even three inches of asphalt asphalt. So it's a cheaper way to go. And if we would have put you know, four inches or three inches of asphalt on that road in the S in the impact fee analysis, that cost would have, you know, been, I don't know what it would be. I'm guessing at least double for that impact fee.
Right now, Mark, it's we just got some bids buried this morning in our company in the asphalt for three and a half inch. Three inch asphalt is three times the cost of double chip and seal. I don't know a lot of single chip and seal roads in the county. But I can tell you that the road went around San Hollow Lake, was put in, I think, in two thousand and five, I think it was. Was a double chip and seal road. It's only hadn't been resurfaced one time in that fifteen, sixteen years. It's a pretty healthy product.
Yeah, there was a good portion of that road that went around to the airport that was that was double chip at the first, too.
Or since a different climate down there.
Yeah, you're, that's true. Most of the communities in in a colder climate and wetter climate of your same similar size, they they do double chip. They can't afford the the asphalt either. It's a good project.
All right, we'll go ahead and close a public comment section for the impact fee study. And the next item on our agenda would be Jefferson Canyon Development, P I D presentation.
All right. Hi, folks. David Calder here with the Jefferson Canyon Resort Project. And I'm here with Hank Isaacson and Ken Dolson, who are also here to help with the information. Can you pull up that?
The P I D one or the other one?
Uh, the other one, not the P I D one.
I'm gonna give you a number.
You'll have to do a trade share on that, too.
Yeah. Any such change slides, just hit the down button and then to go back to the same slide, we'd be up.
Great, thanks. So in the interest of time, I'll just give a brief overview of the project that many of you know about. Most of you do. And then I'll turn the time over to our our legal counsel, who's gonna cover some more specific information on the P I D bond. One point to be made upfront is that on the twelfth of June twenty nineteen, the development agreement entitlements were approved through the town. And so we've been moving forward with town council and and Sean and everybody else to help try to get things in place for this P I D bond. But let me let me get through the basics of the project that will help people understand. You can just scroll through it. I can just say how many which. Well, just why don't I just have you Yeah, this is great. This will this will be good. Go back up to the next slide. Thank you. So this is just a summary of the different components of the development. The first phase is the Village of Many Nations. And we'll we'll get into some more specifics on each one of these aspects. But the Village of Many Nations, which is a Native American cultural center, building three hundred and fifty-four home sites, eleven neighborhoods that of various sizes and and they're all the gated communities. Eventually, we will have a million gallon water tank up on the hill that we will donate to the town of Apple Valley for the benefit of the town and other residents will use a portion of that water, but that will also benefit other residents. There'll be a four acre public park that, again, will be donated to the town. We plan on doing a hundred and eighty room natural We plan on doing 180 room natural log lodge. I have a spa and a restaurant, a golf course and a bro shop. Johnny Miller is going to do the golf course. He's going to design that. There'll be a spa and a corporate retreat on the on the property as well. Eight acres of highway commercial that we have various things that we've discussed with the town on on doing and then the Southwest Renaissance and Science Center, which will include a planetarium. And then there'll be an aerial tram as well that goes from the science center up to the top of the cliff where there will be an observatory complex and the world's largest bronze stagecoach, which we'll show you here in a second. So if we can go to the next slide. So here's the the master plan that was approved in conjunction with the development agreement. And so maybe we can show the next slide, which will show overlay. This might give a little bit better view. You can see the gas station there down on the highway and that shows you the different neighborhoods that are in there. The golf courses in the middle of that. In the upper left there is where the that first phase, the Native American Cultural Center will be. And and so that's just a good overview of the project. So if we can go to the next slide. So this is just an example. The Village of Many Nations was a cultural center that was run by some of our team members and was in existence for about 10 years. And in Kanab and Zion and various areas. And so these are just some images from what they were doing before. We're going to take this to another level and really create a very professional and commercial part of this. And if you can go to the next slide. This is the site plan that that was approved for the for the project and there'll be variety of TPs here that will be available to the public for overnight stays. We'll also accommodate some tour buses. There'll be a gift shop. There will be a longhouse, which is essentially where we will serve food. And there'll be some laundry facilities and showers and bathrooms and some staff housing as well. We go to the next slide. These are some renderings we had done that will kind of give you an idea and the feel of what it's done or what it will look like. This was done by by a specialist down in Las Vegas, who we went through the plans with and showed him what we want to do. So this would be the entrance to the facility. You can see that the TVs up there in the back. And so this is not an exact, you know, rendering of what it will look like. This is just to give you a feel. If you can go to the next slide, I'll give you another feel for what the TVs will look like and kind of the layout of of the project and there's one more rendering here. So that shows the longhouse and some more TPs and just give you a feel. We want to keep it as as natural as possible and conducive to, you know, keeping things aesthetically pleasing, but also accommodating to the public. And when we're sliding here, this is just another image from from the the cultural center that existed back then. This is Jerry Tom, who was part of that project. And so we will have presentations and demonstrations for the public to come and see. So slide and this this is the the company that will be using to to construct the TPs. They're based out of Oregon and they do beautiful work. And so they'll all be intricately painted and and very, you know, aesthetically pleasing. And so this gives you an idea of what the log lodge will look like. This is a company Yellowstone Log Homes out of Ripley, Idaho, and they do amazing work. And so they will construct the the lodge and they'll they'll bring these logs down in trucks and we'll we'll build this in phases. There's four different rooms. And we have a site plan here. And so Marty, so this is the site plan. You can see the four different buildings that we will have. So the first one is 40 rooms and then we'll build the other buildings as as necessary and we'll be selling the units as fractionals for for people to purchase. And then also there will be nightly rentals that we can use in addition to the fractionals. We can talk about more of that later. So this just gives you a layout of what some of the suites and rooms will look like or what the suites and rooms will look like. So there'll be different sizes, different square footages. Some will have two bedrooms. Most of them will have one bedroom living area. They all have kitchenettes and things of that nature. Then the golf course will be designed by Johnny Miller. He did the many of you know the the golf course at Entrada, which Hank was the primary developer at Entrada. And so Johnny has been working with Hank for for a long, long time. He's a great guy and he's he's agreed to come down and design this golf course. So we want it to be a beautiful course. It's going to be a nine hole short course. It won't be 18 holes. It'll just be a nine hole short course. So that's probably important to point out. So the world's largest bronze stagecoach, Jerry and Ronnie Anderson are are very well known artists in St. George. They've done a lot of bronze sculptures around St. George area. And he will be designing and and building this. And in the next slide, we'll show you how big this thing is going to be. So there's Hank on the left. This is how big that that it's going to be. And so the horses are 22 feet tall and, you know, it's going to be a beautiful, you know, beautiful project. And the Southwest Renaissance Center is going to have an 80 foot dome planetarium, Native American exhibit hall. There'll be a mineral and geological exhibit, pioneer exhibit hall, gift shop and the aerial tram that we talked about and the observatory. And we'll show you a couple of images on that just to give you an idea of the planetarium. And we're working with some of the most well respected architects in the world, for that matter. One of them is out of Calgary, Canada, who is helping design this and do the architecture on it. So we're going to make it look fantastic. And this is the company Leimer Leimer, I can't pronounce their name, but they're out of they're out of Colorado. And they'll be doing the tram and there'll be the different cars that will take them from the the science center up to the top of the cliff where we'll have an observatory with telescopes that will be available to the public and the branch stagecoach will be on top of the hill as well. And that's all I got. So hopefully we've got through that quickly. And I'm going to turn the time over to our legal counsel, who's going to cover some more specific information on the PID one. Thanks. Could you open up that second presentation, please? Thank you. While she's opening that up. So David has talked a little bit about the creative vision for this development and I'm going to talk about some of the where the rubber meets the road, how to pay for the public infrastructure that's going to be necessary to support this development. And we're estimating at this point that it's going to be somewhere around 15 and a half million to pay for all the infrastructure for this development. And so how does that get covered here? The town had a consultant, Louis Young, who also helped with the impact fee analysis earlier in the day. Louis Young also looked at this development and did a cost benefit analysis. And it's in your packets. I just want to highlight two primary conclusions out of the report. The first is that the Jefferson Canyon Resort Development is a huge win for the town. And so if you look to at slide number four, you can see some of those benefits, over 200 million in added taxable value property in the town or 18 million in added revenues over the next 30 years and a net benefit of almost 3 million over the next 30 years because of the Jefferson Canyon Resort Development. So it's a it's a win for the town. The second major conclusion of the report is that they recommend district financing to cover the cost of these public public infrastructure in the development. So what is that? Public infrastructure, district financing? And I apologize, some of you I know are more up on it than the others.
Can I just interrupt you real quick?
Sure.
Just so everybody understands the we work for the developer. We went out on our own and we hired a, or in fact, there was one, we were just talking, Louis Young. They're they work for us. They're the ones, he's quoting their numbers, not his numbers. So these were our independent numbers that we verified through a third party.
That's correct. Thanks for that verification, Mayor. Second recommendation was that we have district financing. And that's what we're here today to talk about is district financing for this development. And the point I wanted to emphasize is that the town's consultant recommended that town allowed district financing for this development. So so what does that look like in general? The general principle is let's let new development pay for itself. That's the general principle. Now, as far as how that works, so if you have a major infrastructure cost, like in in a new development like Jefferson Canyon Resort, what a municipality can do is create a new independent local district in that development. That district can then bond to pay for those infrastructure costs. It pays back that bond with taxes that are levied only within that district. So what that means is if a PID is created within the Jefferson Canyon Development area and it issues bonds and it levies a tax, that tax is only applicable to buyers who purchase property within that development. So your current residents across Highway 59, they won't pay those additional taxes. Only people who buy within this new development would pay those taxes. So that's how that works. If you wouldn't mind going to the next slide there. And what we've determined based on how the development the development is projected to proceed over the next five to seven years, we would break this down into three separate districts. And so the first district is basically or generally where the first area of development would be. It's primarily or excuse me, it's all residential development in this district. But again, I want to emphasize, if you look at that map, that those are the proposed boundaries of District One. Only residents within those boundaries would pay a tax that would be levied by that district. If you're outside of those boundaries, you don't pay that additional tax. This is residential. You can see excluded a 501(c)(3) property up up at the top left, the Village of Many Nations property. The golf course is also excluded. If you could go to the next slide, I'll show you District Two. And again, this is the same thing as development progresses. When we're ready to develop this area, District Two would then bond for public infrastructure that's necessary to serve that district. And then the same, if you go to the next slide, also for District Three. Again, same process, a bond for infrastructure that's necessary to support that district. But again, a couple of things I want to emphasize, and I'm sorry if I'm repeating myself, but the bonds that are issued by these districts are solely the debts of those districts. It's not debt that town will ever get asked to account for. It doesn't go on the books of the town. It's completely independent, paid for by people who buy within that development. Next slide, please. So.
Before you go on.
Yeah.
Just for clarification, there is no scenario by which a town would ever absorb that debt.
Correct.
Bankruptcy, they don't sell homes. Any scenario where several live in there, Paul Macklinson.
That's correct. They're completely independent entities. Now, the town has some oversight through the governing document that we're asking the town to to approve today. But other than that, that's it. It's totally independent. So I've kind of spoken generally about what kind of infrastructure we're looking at. I'm going to get into a little bit more detail here. So infrastructure in District One, they're going to District One would purchase water, a water tank, roads and utilities, sewer utilities, excuse me, sewer plants, land, roundabout beautification, projected cost of about 9 million. If you go to that next slide, District Two, same thing, water, water tank, roads and utilities, and then land. We're estimating about three and a half million total costs for District Two. And then next slide, similar, except for the the town park that would be included. And again, just to emphasize, all of this infrastructure would be financed and paid for by the districts and then dedicated to the town. So these. Could I just, if you don't mind, that's one of the questions I have. Because in David's presentation earlier, he said that the million dollar tank and the four acre park would be a donation by the developer. So so I just want to clarify, it's not going to be a donation by a developer. It's going to be public infrastructure that will be paid for from bonds. Is that correct? That's correct. It would be bonded for and then dedicated to. Just do not want anyone listening or anyone on the council to think that the developer was donating that. It's quite different. It's being paid for with the bonds. Correct. If you could go to the next next slide, please. So just to summarize, again, this is the financing structure that Louis Young, the town's consultant, has recommended for financing the infrastructure in this development. What what that looks like is three public infrastructure districts that we're requesting with a mill limit of nine. Utah law allows us to allows districts to impose up to 15 mills. We're asking for nine. And again, that's the ceiling. Really, for for market marketing purposes, we're going to want to keep that as low as possible. Our target is lower than that. But again, that's just a ceiling for us. And again, we're estimating at this point, based on the models that we've seen of net bond proceeds of around 15 and a half million to cover public infrastructure cost of around 15.2 million. And again, just to emphasize, these districts won't hold title to roads. Everything will be dedicated to the town. And then lastly, this is all purely a financing structure. So what that means is all the town's land use regulations, all the ordinances of the town, all those apply to this development just as it would, as just as they would to any other development within the town. So any questions for us about this presentation?
I have a couple of questions that came back to for the first part of it. On the million gallon water tank, how come that's not going in first? I mean, the cost of them in a water tank. So if a water tank can't remove it, can we later on put in a million gallon water tank?
Well, we don't. That 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 tank is up on top of the hill. And it's the second district that's covering the cost of the road and everything up to the top of the hill and the water tank. So we're putting a a call it a temporary water tank. It's about a 300,000 gallon tank that will serve everything down below for the first few years. Now, the mayor asked me if we would we would consider moving that tank over here to your hill. That's fine. As long as we can get the same water pressure and the same water amount, we don't care where that tank is. We just don't have the need to put it up on top. If we did and we filled it, we'd blow the top top off these tanks for the first time you opened the tap. So we don't need that yet. Okay. And the idea for that million tank came from a couple of years ago when the town bought the system up there at the canyon. The can the can of water. There's a million gallon tank. They're about the same elevation. So they would balance each other if you were to get to that point.
It's about the same elevation of Cedar Point.
Yeah. If you put a line between them, they would balance it. It would be affecting two of them.
My my other question, going through this document and working with the town or even with the water department and fire department, if if this PID is created, what I guess my concern is town working with your PID, is there points where we are going to butt heads? Like if there's something that needs to be done or the water department would like to see a certain requirement or something done. And then because you guys are in charge of your PID, you're going to say, no, that's not what we're going to.
Well, everything we do in the development will be according to town standards and town regulations.
Okay. And it seemed like in the document, going through the comments, that we're kind of protected in that that format of it. I just wanted to see what's good. And then, you know, the answer is I'm not sure how much Sean's come through or read it.
I I think the way to look at this as it's a it's a district to create a generate the funds to pay for the public infrastructure, nothing else. So it'd just be the same as if the developer came in with $4 million and said, we're going to use our own financing to put into public infrastructure. They're still required to do it to our standards that we have in place. And so it's no different than that. I know I can see where the confusion would come in because you hear the word district.
Right.
They won't have the authority to cover to verify them our standards. That's right.
All right. That was my biggest concern. So that's.
You can just say your name for the record. I'm sorry.
Hank Isaacson.
The other thing I'd like to bring up is we have developer agreements that have been finalized for the town and for the water district. And so those agreements are already in place from probably, I would say, a year ago. And so we could resurrect the copy and just refresh everybody's memory on those, but those are already completed. And so he has. And so he has that governing document as well that's.
I remember that we have new members and stuff, blah, blah, blah. Just can't remember all that stuff.
Yeah. The other issue I don't, I'm going to bring it up or Sean's going to bring it up. So we want to.
Go ahead, Mayor.
That we, Sean and I were talking a little bit about this today. We have a couple of issues that we feel are outstanding on the document. And that's that we have really three principles from the development as the PID, should we call them committee directors? What words should we?
Boards. And call it board of directors.
Board of directors. All right. So the board of directors are also three people. And my understanding is the state of Utah even requires that we have people on there that are in the voting district and none of you are fully members of the district.
That's true. So, and. Mayor, and I can just clarify for you on that one, because it is kind of confusing. They, they have, if they're not, then they need to be property owners or agents of the property owner, but they still have to be registered voters where they live. And I don't see anything in here in the certification that says that they're registered voters. It's, it talks about other things.
Which, which, where in St. George?
Wherever you live. It just says that you have to be a registered voter at your residence. But we have no evidence of that either. So I got something that we would be.
Registered Republican. I'm hitting everybody.
Listen, I just learned that horses are measured in hanks and not hats. Are we to that staff?
Let's be honest.
We can get that verification to you, but yes, currently the law says org members will be either residents or if it's a business entity, which is true in this case, they can be agents of those business entity owners.
So we all have ownership of that.
But we'll just need that clarification on this. Also, Mayor, it does say, we, it downs appropriate time. We did talk about mill levies before, and as we progressed in this, we started, I believe, in our first conversations early on around somewhere, estimating around six mills. Last conversation, our number one, nine. Documents here are going to the full 15. That's allowed under the statute. And so.
What document?
The, the petition for the creation. It states right here that, that Utah law allows you to go to the 15.
Really asking for maximum of nine.
Okay.
And we probably won't use that much.
And, and so that's, that's one of the discussion points, though, along with some that you'll have there.
I, you know, I, I got a, still being too, that we, we started off with this book, the white one. And this was based on information that was emailed to us. And then this one got printed yesterday, and I haven't had a chance to review it. So it's, this has different information from that one. I think even this one is still missing exhibits. And it seems that we would want to make sure any exhibits are supposed to be there, that were brought in on should be, should be there.
And that came from where? Did somebody send that?
Yeah, I can speak to that. Everything was emailed over to John. For whatever reason, that email went to his spam filter.
And the one you sent me, I sent to him, and that's what was printed the first time. And there was missing information in it. So I, the one thing that I remembered, you know, in our last meeting was give me two weeks. I mean, this is a lot of information. And, you know, we haven't had a bit of days and.
Some of them have 30 minutes. Well, I just.
Yeah. So I can speak to the difference between the documents that you had or included in the original packet versus those were missing maps. So all this different are maps between what you reviewed weeks ago and what was.
Those were sent out, those maps were sent.
I think this was missing even the creation document, so.
Yeah. What, what John originally put into the packet was the resolution, which included the governing documents. So you had everything but the maps. We just looked at those today. That's the only thing that's different.
And so for clarification, were they the maps that showed the different districts? Or was it the overall?
No, the three districts, and they were colored maps in the documents we sent. You've got those because you sent me packet of what you had and those maps were in that.
Yeah, I, I don't know why we have a second set printed out of this. And if I didn't get this until I showed up tonight, didn't be able to look at it. So, because they were working on it today, he was printing it and put it in a binder so we even have it at our meeting. And so anyway, I feel like that I'm a little bit scared and a bit on.
There's also some executed, notarized documents in this that are not in this.
And that's what I find is like, you know, the ability for us to review this properly, I don't think we've done a good job of that. And I, I've got a voice also, my concern with a phone call I got, you know, from Hank this afternoon, that's changing how he wants to do the sewer. I think I need time with the district to Dale Harris and Harold Merrick to talk about what it is our expectations are on that because I don't.
I have a couple of questions.
We have, we have strong feelings about doing what we're doing.
And that just came up last Friday.
We didn't know it was an option until last Friday and so.
There's a couple of concerns which I'd like to bring up. One is.
I, I need you, if you could, a couple of years, have you on screen for us. Thanks, Hank.
Yeah. The one, there's several concerns I have. First of all, I thought it was a wonderful idea, but then when I found out that we might be the only people paying for it, I thought, hello. I mean, that's kind of like you talked about here. Why should somebody?
Don't you be the only person paying for it?
Well, that's, that's probably how it would start out, but we're also talking about allowing a higher mill rate in that meeting that we had.
And we're going to have to pay for it, right?
Could somebody tell us what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're talking about a sewer, a sewer lagoon down by the old, old golf course down here.
As opposed to a onsite maintenance, kind of a system that we would be responsible for.
Well, no, not necessarily.
Sewer district.
The, you're the ones that sent me this, this AquaTech. And you said you liked it, you reviewed it. I guess Travis.
We, yeah, I said that we haven't finished reviewing it, but yeah.
Right. And, and we've always from day one had a sewer plant on the site for just that project. We've got a lot of sewer in that project. And the reason we like the sewer plant versus the main sewer is that you can put it in in phases. You only have to put in certain things add to it as you build out. We can put in the first phase, which will build out the Village of Many Nations, and the first two neighborhoods are less than $400,000. We have no idea what sewer line all the way down the hill is going to cost. The other, the other main concern I have is that we lose the availability of thousands of gallons of treated water, which we were going to put in to our golf course area there. It would, it would irrigate the golf course and all our common areas. So how are we going to replace that? We can bring a pipeline back from the sewer lagoon down there. You'd have to put a treatment plant down there to make the water potable to put on the, on the golf course. So that doesn't make any sense. Anyway, and Travis Holm does not want to participate in the sewer. And he's got a major project right across the street from ours coming up soon. So anyway, all those reasons would say that we would prefer to go with the, the onsite plan, and we don't have any problem agreeing in contract form to maintain and take care of that ourselves. Not a problem at all. The city wouldn't have anything to do with it. And it wouldn't have, we'd take care of all those costs.
Hank, I got a question for you. At the end of the day, you said in phases, give me some ballpark idea of where you're going to be at the end of the day and the cost of the development of this sewer program. I know phase one is $400,000.
We don't, we don't know exactly. We just, we just got ahold of the AquaTech table last week.
How about your system you have in this plan for? What, how about?
Yeah, we, that system was a Ranco. And it was like $880,000.
Oh, or your entire pre.
The entire thing. This one will probably cost a little bit more than that, and I don't know. They're working on the cost right now. They came up with the cost for the first phase, $380,000.
Question for Sean then, is a private entity able to maintain a public sewer system?
We could do a contract with the HOA to do that. It doesn't change the dynamic of what, what Hank was saying, and that is he's saying, why should they pay for the lagoons or the connection for the sewer? If they weren't going to do this public infrastructure district, then they would still have to pay for it. The way they would pay for it is charging more for the product that they're selling, and then of course they get that money back. So it'd still be paid for by the development or the developer, that system. So your point about how much would it cost and all that, but the, the concern about, do you want to have that type of infrastructure being maintained by a third party is a valid one, because ultimately it lies within the district's boundaries, and they're ultimately responsible for making sure that the sewage within their boundaries is taken care of according to federal standards and state standards.
I mean, so we're overseeing it, I think, and it's valid, and that's, you know, it's.
Well, the state would oversee it. They've already talked to the water quality in Salt Lake.
We have to.
And they're, they're in favor of the system. They love it. There's two or three of them already in the state. They're very, very popular. They last forever, and the maintenance on them is, is not that expensive. And they, they would come down and oversee the maintenance.
I don't know that the state, yeah, that if they would, I'd invite them to come to St. George and take care of our reservoir.
Yeah. Right now, here it's Harold.
Believe me, they're not.
Harold, now to stand up.
I was just going to comment that we knew that Hank would be talking about this this evening, so Dale Harris has been spending the last couple of days on the phone with the people in Salt Lake, and he would have a great deal to add to this, that the bottom line is that, and I don't want to get too far into it and, and lead anybody astray, but the, there won't be enough sewage generated in this project to make a free flowing sewer line work. You're going to have to add water in addition to what is normally used that goes into the system. So their, just, the male response was that they didn't know ponds were a feasible option. And that's kind of where that sits. So they weren't optimistic at the beginning.
They meaning who?
The state DEQ.
They mean the state of Utah.
DEQ, okay. All right. All right.
I would add, and I visited with Ash Creek, certain district, they had just the opposite.
I, I, I said, we might as well, Ash Creek, and his feedback was, is the system we're talking about, even with AquaTech, were a mandate to the bigger problem and that sewer ponds would be the solution.
If there were not sewer to generate it.
Right. I'm, I understand that this problem, that hey, we get there, but that's, that was his feedback. And I want to finish one of the thought real quick, too, is that in the case of a bankruptcy, the cities can end up being the ones that take care of it. And that's why it's important that the district is on board with whatever is selected with Ranco or AquaTech. I think that absolutely whatever we decide that we're going to sign up for, we need to be on board with, because we could end up being the guys that take care of it. We have to, I, in my view, we have to pick a system and then require that no matter where a project is. That way we're maintaining the same type of system, and we understand that we have the parts available and whatever else. And that's, that's where I want some consistency as well, and that's why I feel like that it's important that we have AILs input, AILs input, and DEQ. And so anyway, that's.
Hank, I probably should explain where I was going with this. I'm not really looking sadly at you with the cost of anything that I said was being in the state for this meeting tonight, your fair share. I don't believe you should be paying more than your fair share. But if you've got a million dollars, he's got a thousand dollars, he's got 500,000 up the street, and everybody wants to know, we may go find a permanent solution that supports our entire town. That would be my goal, to find a long-term solution and spend the money wisely before we make that decision.
And I understand that. It's a function of timing. We've been working on this for a year and a half since you guys came to us and said, go do a PID. And I'm like, oh.
Really?
Yeah, really.
Takes a lot to. It's a must.
Yeah. So I mean, we, we can actually start this thing soon as we, you know, soon as we get this bid approved, even before we get the money, because it's all reimbursable for the, for this money we do on public infrastructure. So we're anxious to get going on this thing.
So could I ask a question, Mayor?
Yes.
On your last statement, the first phase is going to be the village, right? And maybe one or two lots, very small.
Well, yeah, the first, the village and an 18-watt subdivision. And then immediately behind that, there's another subdivision, which would all be served by this first phase.
So if you're, and just saying as far as the timing goes, if it allows you to get started on your village and you do a septic system just for the village, which I think would not have a lot of sewers coming out right, they would just be.
500 people a day.
Yeah, but 500 people a day using red, public restaurants is not the same as, you know, 500 people going to a hotel, right? So, so there we, so that doesn't sound like it's going to be a large system. I'm just not saying that's a, that this is what you want to do, but there might be a way to get started on that portion with just a normal septic tank. And then later on, whatever solution.
We had already discussed that possibility to put in. In fact, we've even had a bid on it for a large holding tank that would be temporary. We can, that could be used for up to two years, but it would probably cost as much as it would cost to put in the first phase of the sewer.
And that's why I'm thinking if you're just doing that, a commercial portion of that, and you do a septic there, and you just build them the cost of just simply connecting all of that up, have it ready to go to connect up to whatever ultimately goes in there, would not be that much additional cost and might get you started. But, but you know, the mayor and, and council member, I'll have Grayson.
And I understand, we'd love to be able to help the city.
What's that?
Do you know my name?
No, I, I do. I do hear and know your name, even at my age, and I'm not that much younger than Hank.
Oh, yes, you are.
Take it as Hank, but.
We would love to help the city get a sewer, but, but I don't necessarily want to stand front cost, even if we assess it to our owners over there, it's going to cost. And it's going to take time. We don't have any idea how long it's going to take or what it's going to cost. You indicated you have some lines in there that might be able to be used. I don't know, you, we, we met with Travis Monday, and he is absolutely not in favor of that.
Doesn't matter to me what Travis wants. I care less.
Okay.
That's not true. That's not true. Hang on, don't make statements like that.
Yeah.
Travis is a resident of the community, he's entitled.
I'm just saying that.
I think what he's trying to say is, is that we don't want to create a scenario where the tail waxed and all.
Right.
That's, that's what he really meant to say.
The logical, the logical thing for, if we do a town sewer, we could cross the road and go down through his project, because he's got 150, 200 homes over there. And then I had that whole area down below that, back in the good old days, I had that all engineered, it was all, and we were, we had the same sewer plan at that time. And so I have no problem with that. I just don't want to be the guy, the, the development that gets stuck with the cost of it. If there's some way to get reimbursed, you know, out of other hookups or so forth, then we ought to have something like that.
Well, I don't see how reimbursement could work when you, yeah, you're paying for it. So I don't, I don't see how that could work, but.
It would help pay the PID.
I feel like, anyway, did anybody else have any other questions on this?
I think there's enough unanswered questions that we need to take some time to look at it. However, I also understand where you've been the last year and a half, and you're ready to start firing your pistols. But I don't think that one or two weeks is going to kill us to sit down and take a look with, with your, with the engineers and see what we've come up with, which we're good at. Dale's already started that process. I started some of that process. The mayor started some of that process. I don't think that we're talking about 30 days or even 25 days. I think we're talking about one or two weeks and to just let us sit back and take a look at what, what we can do longer, before we execute this. I also believe there's something we can do, we can allow it to be to work on this, why you can report on your project, and maybe. While you can move forward with your project, then maybe we look at that a little bit and say, if we can't come to a conclusion in a hypothetical day or two weeks, that we move you forward to get you started while we still work on this, let's set a drop-dead date, say if we can't get it resolved by X date, then we can go forward with this other system. But I think it's imperative...
I'm not sure the sewer is that big a deal. We have to hold it up as much as the issues on, you know, who's on the board and the level that we raise.
What's the issue there with who's on the board?
Here we are. Well, the town may, the town may look at that and say, we don't think the board should be three. Maybe it should be four, maybe there should be someone else that's on the board. Devin, you would agree that the town has the discretion to say, we think the governing board should include someone from our legislative body, if we think that's the right thing, governing body or someone from the town. There's that discussion that I think needs to be had, too. And we can talk about that and resolve that.
Well, it would be nice if we could somehow move forward with everything but the sewer, or whatever. I mean, it's going to take, it's going to take, you know, how long is it going to take to put a sewer line all the way down there? And what's it going to cost? We don't know that. That's going to take some time to engineer.
I think you and I know both that there's a simpler way to do that. The sewer isn't going to be resolved and then affect the construction drawings. So you're not going to, you're not ready to speak to construction drawings tonight, correct?
Construction drawings on?
On your Phase 1.
Absolutely.
You're ready to submit?
They're all done.
I haven't seen... I'm behind eight ball.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe they're done for a year and a half.
Quick clarification on board members, though. The PID Act says that board members must be property owners. So we see that structure a lot where in other kinds of districts, we'll see a council member serve on that board. This would be different in that they all have to be property owners or agents.
You are correct on that one, until they have voters in the district or...
Correct. I've got a million dollar...
Thank you for that, Devin.
All right, if you could just get the... I've got a million dollar bond, I'll sell you.
Voter registration.
Lock, I'll take.
And then, quick clarification, what does the town that you have?
Well, I do, I do think that the town needs to decide what levy you feel comfortable with, and in all of these documents, that's the maximum levy that could be assessed. And if the language, if, in fact, there's the difference between a six mil levy that was initially discussed and the nine mil levy that's being discussed now, and you want some of that to apply towards, if you decide to have a different solution for the sewage, that they address that issue in here as well, so you know that that portion will only go to that. I do want you to keep in mind, as for all council members, as you vote through all these documents, remember that you don't have to agree with everything that they've listed here as something that would be bonded for. That's the discretion, that's the discretion you have. In some cases, some jurisdictions have said, we'll let you do the roads, and we'll let you do this other infrastructure, and that's it. The rest of it will be financed traditionally, as you have with other developments in the past. Just, you have all of those. I think really what I'm hearing, Devin and Hank, is that they need some time to go through these documents here, and that's understandable, to be able to look at them and ask any perfect questions they might have after looking at them again. And I certainly think with a district of this magnitude, that's not a unreasonable request.
And we have Paula Devi online, and their books are sitting here, these black books that now contain additional documents in there, so they don't even have them at home.
Now, those documents, were those just the maps? Is that what the attorney said, that those just contain the maps? Is that the only thing different from what we have?
Been the copies.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, the difference in this book and this book, I have not done this.
Okay, you said you didn't have the maps. Trust me, we didn't.
Have you gone through them?
I've gone through most of these documents in the last round that we had that were sent out, that I believe are the correct ones, because I believe the latest ones, Devin's, are the ones that do have the notarized documents in there.
And that's the documents that he signed in the back?
Yeah.
That was my concern level, like, wow, here's a signed executed document. I've never seen it before, signed in my previous book. And I am behind the eight ball, because the development agreement, construction drawings, etc., have all taken place in the past, but this proved me for a loop. And I say, anytime you see a signed executed document, for the first time, you're...
Understood. And again, what I'll say from the attorney's side is that if you ask me if they're legal, I will say, they look perfectly legal, except for a couple of things. But whether it's what you want to do or not, that's what the town council has to decide. And then, once you give us that direction, then the attorneys get together and we say, okay, let's adjust the documents we have to reflect what the town council has indicated they will approve.
I looked at the agenda, and I didn't see that we were taking action on this. What is the vote of action? Let me ask Hank that question. What is your hope of action tonight?
To approve it?
Yeah, it's...
That was the intent.
So a couple of things, counsel. The first was to have a hearing on the request, and then there was a request to adopt resolutions to create it.
And we got that on our agenda.
We had this on the agenda a month ago, and we got postponed, so...
And the hearing, of course...
Well, you know, we put them on again, though we're saying...
You can still conduct a public hearing first here.
Oh, thanks. Give us a couple minutes here to chat, okay?
Okay.
And so, Paula Devi, what's your comfort level on approving this?
Well, the second packet I just got this afternoon, and it is a lot to kind of digest and try and interpret.
Do you have any questions?
I don't.
Paula Devi?
I'm good, other than just coming over where you guys, I've read this book, I went through that one a few days ago, so I went through that, to kind of express my...
This is my position. I'm a pretty transparent guy. These guys have been whipping this thing over here a year and a half. I've got their buzzet kicked all over the place. It's time to move them forward. But, me personally, I don't have all the information in front of me. There's a couple things I'd like to verify. For example, you mentioned there's an executed development agreement that I haven't seen, and I shouldn't have seen, but, for example, what is, what is our obligation? And I'll wait for Harold to come up to me, Sean, so I can ask Sean this question. What are our obligations in the development agreement?
Dale, I can't hear. There's too much background talk.
We can't, you know, it's sidebar, so I'm sorry. All right.
Sean, I have a question for you. Are you familiar enough with the development agreement to recall whether or not we have an obligation to support their requirement for support onsite packaging plant?
No, we don't. The development agreement, I recall, does not require us to say...
Hang on a second.
Does not.
Hang on a second.
But it does, it does address the proposal for the onsite sewage. Section 5 in the development agreement actually does sort out this question. But, but does it actually obligate the town to say that that's the only option the town or the district would accept for the treatment of sewage?
I don't think it obligates the town, but I think my point is, this has been, that was agreed upon a long time ago. It was only last year, last week, a different idea was presented, and again, Hank has really considered and looked into it. But I just want to make that clear, that that was agreed upon over a year ago in that development agreement.
Okay, so I would say this, when you say agreed upon...
You're implying...
But what I'm saying is that the town and the district, that are ultimately responsible, and it's really the districts for treating that sewage, can come back and say, look, as a condition for this PID being instituted or initiated here, created, you, this is what you will do. And I think that's perfectly fine. There's nothing in the development agreement that says that you have to create the PID, that it has to, the PID has to fund the sewage treatment for that. So that's why I, we might disagree on this. And I don't think that it obligates the district.
It was the day we got the approval on the development agreement, you and the mayor came to me and said...
Here's an option for... Yes, and the option, and I just want to clarify, if I could, that. Because when that option was presented to you, remember, the developer does have the obligation to put in all of these public improvements, and that's, we're not here disputing that. I think the PID is, can be a useful tool for cities and a town like Apple Valley that needs some help with some of their infrastructure to be able to do this. And I also think it's something that can be good for the developer to be able to assist them to do something that creates revenue for a town or city that needs it. And I will also tell you that I worked on this legislation when it was first proposed. I know Senator McKay quite well, and I think anyone at the legislature that knows me knows that I'm an advocate for this when the tool is used in the right way. What I want to make clear, though, is this, and that is, when this option was created by the legislature and we informed you of that, it was to say that that can assist you in putting in some of your infrastructure. It was never that we are committing to put in, allow you to bond for 100% of all the infrastructure that you have. There was never any commitment on that part. It was investigate this tool. Now, I'm not saying that you shouldn't go with funding everything through the bond. That is for you all to make that decision. I just want you to understand that there was no obligation, nobody, nobody went to the developer and said that the town will do this, they will create this. It was, here's a tool that could be useful and could be beneficial to both the town and to you in getting your development off the ground. So I feel like this is getting a little derailed here, and I don't think it needs to. I think that the town, you as a council, asking for more time to go through this and weigh the options, talking to the district and weighing the options, that in the end, will create something that works for both for years to come, is not unreasonable. And lastly, another point the mayor made, and I just want to emphasize, that this delay, there was, there was quite a long time where we requested financial information from the developer, and there was quite a long delay in getting that. And the first information received was significantly lacking. And so, what you all did was prudent. You said, we need to have someone look at all of this, a third party, to make sure that what, the numbers that we're saying here are realistic enough that they will work. So, so I don't think...
Not all us, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to make that clear.
I don't want to...
Yeah.
So, and I agree, for the record, I agree. I think this funding program is fantastic, and I'll even say, good job on helping it together here. But I think we can move it forward if we reserve or condition upon us being able to reach some comfort zone with how the water and the tanks and the sewer lines are constructed. That, but my question, my fear is, is that we've already obligated ourselves in documenting the development agreements, that they can come back tomorrow and say, I don't care what you think, we're going to go to this way. That's what I'm concerned about.
Well, we are committed on that. There's nothing we can change on it.
Right, but they, but, and they could just fund it themselves. What we're saying here is, they want to be able to use those public funds, bond funds, in order to build this. And I don't believe that in the district or the council necessarily disagrees with that. They just want to make sure that the right system is put in that will last for years and benefit everyone, because if you have development across the street, you may end up having to put in some sewer infrastructure anyway, so...
I don't want, I don't want him, I don't, I don't think it's fair to have a project, be a standalone project, independent of the rest of the community. I think the infrastructure needs to benefit the whole. An onsite packaging plant doesn't necessarily achieve that. If there is a way, if there is a way to use those dollars to support the overall community, that's what I'd like to take a look at. So I'm not opposed to moving forward tonight, under the subject, under the conditions that we can find a viable way to find a sewer system and a water system that benefits the whole of the district community. That's where I'm coming from.
Let's, let's do this. Right now, we're on item two on our agenda, and let's, we've already done item three. No, we're going to do item, no, we've done item three. We're going to do item four now, which is a public hearing regarding the creation of the PID, and open this up for anyone else that wants to make comments on the PID. So I'll open up public comments regarding the creation of more and more public infrastructure. Anybody have any comments they want to make? Yes? In any place, too.
Abby Stoker. My concern would be, you're going to have a, what'd you say, you're going to have a fun hill and certain stars?
Observatory.
Observatory. How will you make it so that it really is a good thing in having the homes and everything going in? Are you going to try to make it so we don't have a lot of street lights, or how are you going to do that?
Yeah, we, the town, years and years ago, before you were mayor, adopted a night sky or a dark sky.
Are you that way?
We've updated that.
We are that way.
Yeah, we do have it.
I'm still with that.
So we will have street lights, we have to, on these streets. But they'll be low, and they'll be, anyway, if you've been to Intra, look at those street lights. They're not the great big hanging lights. They're low and they're down.
Where, where?
Intra.
Intra?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're using, you know, I've learned as much of what not to do is what to do in 30 years of Intra. So I'd like to take all in, all these good amp and, and apply it over here, so this is...
So you're really trying to fit in with the rural area, but not really...
Absolutely.
I know we're going to have roads, but I still like to protect the integrity.
The easy way to explain it is, it does not project light outward or outward. It only illuminates the ground below you. That's the easy way to say it.
Right, so you're not like... All right, that's, that was my concern.
Thank you. Any other public comments? How about online? Any public comments online?
Nope.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public comments. And... The next... I guess we're going to shift gears. You guys want to do the number seven next? Which is, oh, this is fresh on our mind. Let's just, we're going to just change the order a little bit. Let's go to item seven, discussion possible action on creation of one or more public infrastructure. Project agenda. And you can't whisper, it's all public, so...
I was going to tell you, I love you.
So, anyway, if you... What's your thoughts on it? We can just talk.
I love you, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, regarding making a motion, how, how it's come a little weird.
I've made my piece. I'm moving forward, wanting, and we can legally retain those conditions until we've worked those, until we've systematically worked out those issues.
Well, and my question would be, and of course, I would invite Devin to comment, but if your concern is that you have not had time to review the documents, and we have some changes that we do want to make to those documents, then I don't think it helps us tonight to take that action until we get that language or address the concerns that you have.
I mean, I feel comfortable with, you know, I can do a weekend and go through this one more time, make sure there's something else, because I would be more comfortable with that. And we can just do a Zoom meeting, kind of, a special meeting on this.
Well, we've already done some public hearings, so it's just doing a little...
So, it gives everybody a chance to read it, bring up comments, and put together a Zoom meeting. You know, gives about a, maybe a week, and I think that we can head to my direction on it. I just, I don't feel comfortable, because I haven't been able to parent everything, and I feel like that you have red lines that...
And, and there are minor, I think that Devin and I, we did meet a couple of weeks ago, and so I think we understand the bulk of the documentation, so...
I think it's all there. I just, I like...
I do think that Chairman Mayor, in our...
I do think that Chairman Mayor, in our sideline here when he was asking some questions on, have some questions that needs to be addressed and some timing of some of the infrastructure that should be addressed in the documents. And so that will be helpful too. So I think two weeks is, is realistic. There should be some answers that you get back regarding the, uh, the treatment of the sewage and how that's going to be handled.
And then let's also get you the documents you asked for with the developer, and so you're up to speed on it.
I think so.
And, um, from there, we'll work with the district, let's make sure they're happy as well, and, um, we'll, we'll shoot for, you know, a week, two weeks, tabling, and we'll come up with, um, a Zoom meeting to at least just pass this line off if, uh, if you guys move forward. Does that sound reasonable to everybody?
I agree.
Yep, sounds good.
So let's, let's have a motion to table the site to a special meeting.
I make a motion that we, uh, table item number seven regarding the creation of one or more public infrastructure districts by the town of Apple Valley for Justin Gane.
And call for a- And call for a special session.
And call for a special session, session.
If you're, if you're going to include that in your motion there, then I would say you identify that date that you're going to do that now. Well, otherwise you just would-
I don't want to lock myself in because I don't know what-
That's why I would suggest then that you just table it.
Just table it, okay.
That's right.
But we-
Because you have closed the public hearing today.
Yeah, I should do that.
So we don't, the public hearing is done.
Let's call that right now, that, you know, we do close the public hearing, I did not do that, but, uh, I thi, I think we did, actually.
You did, you did.
So, so we don't-
Go ahead and-
So we don't need to have a public hearing.
Go and redo that motion without the, uh, special session.
Okay. So I make a motion that we table item number seven regarding the creation of one or more public infrastructure districts by the town of Apple Valley, Utah for Justin Gane.
I'll second that motion.
And vote?
Aye.
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 Debbie?
I, oh, I-
Okay. All right, uh, so that motion carries and, um, we'll, uh, maybe we'll get a meeting united so we can go a little more time.
I think we would also need to include the input from the district.
Sounds great. Do you do Sundays?
Yeah, whatever it is, let me know.
That seems-
Day and a time, sorry.
That seems to be Sean's favorite days, a month like Sundays.
It gets you mad as well.
He's praying. He just gave me up, mayor.
We appreciate your patience. We do understand the struggle you've gone through and we'll get to it just rapidly pop again, make it brighter. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I don't know how big it is, but I feel we helped with the district, but we'll, uh, we'll get this figured out and, uh, we'll try and get you guys signed on. Anyway, um, so next item on the agenda, let's-
Item number seven is?
Let's move to, uh, item number five, discussion possible action on ordinance 20.1-01, 001, an ordinance amending zone, zoning map, AB 1329 to RE 1. You know, we've, uh, this is, uh, turned down by our, we're gonna do, thanks you guys.
Nice meeting.
This is, uh-
Thank you.
Shift gears. Does anybody want to add a room? All right, so this is a, um, a project that, um, I've spent some time with Travis talking about. Uh, I'd just like for the public record, everyone know that it's been turned down by the planning commission, Travis, Travis Wells and the Cedar Vista, I think it's called, subdivision, it's AB 1329. And, um, planning commission, they have recommended a, you know, the application and had some conversations with Travis and he, um, I need him to tell us what, why we're, why they're wrong and what he's gonna do about it, so. Travis, would you, one of you guys, uh, wind up?
I'll step up and take the heat from everyone, I guess.
Right.
I'm Craig Coats with Alliance Consulting, representing Travis on this development. Uh, through the planning commission, uh, one of the things that we looked at as we kept, we listened to what the residents' concerns were on the area, we first started with the, the zone of R, R1 for the, for the development. We wanted to match what was on the general plan. Our plan for the development was always to do two to two and a half acre lots on the development and, and provide all the, um, and provide a subdivision between 20 to 25 lots was the plan. Um, after looking and going through the planning commission, a lot of the concerns that came up was infrastructure, uh, concern about the detention pond on the site that's part of the stormwater master requirement that you guys had, we were talking about earlier this morning, uh, and there was concern of being lots and lots of lots, like 50 plus lots on it because it is about 60 acres. And, and we, we looked at that and one of the things that we, you know, we wanted to listen on what the planning commission said and said, okay, what can we do to help mitigate that, uh, with our, do you, do you guys have that map that we proposed for the, the Senator John?
It's in the packet, yeah.
It's in the packet, I'm not sure.
About 500 pages we have there.
Well, it's likely we numbered them, so it's gonna be-
Action 5.
Well, what we went back and did is we, we looked at where the, because of the detention pond, uh, we needed some of these lots to be smaller than the two and a half acres. Uh, we, we understand that this is a, a, a regional detention pond that the city needs for the area, and so we allocated some, some area to handle that, uh, future infrastructure of that detention pond.
About 180, 182, something like that.
Yeah, we're- Yeah, there, all right, okay.
Time for 177. 178.
So, so typically at a, you know, we're asking for a, a zone change, this is, this is the, this is the original zone map that we provided, which is RE 1. And then-
Right there. Right here.
Okay, yeah, so this, typically, you know, you don't provide a, a lot layout at a zone change, but we wanted to propose what we were initially thinking as, as what we wanted to do for the, for the development. So east of it, we have two and a half acre lots, and then west we would have smaller than two acre lots. And with the detention basin down on the south end, and that's that three and a half acre parcel. So with the concern of going more, we decided that maybe we should do a, a split zone on this, so that's what we're asking now, is that to the east it'd be two and a half acre lots, and then the west would be the R1 acre lots. But what we also did is we, we made sure, we also heard there was concern that of maybe splitting these lots in the future because they wouldn't be above one acre. So in this lot layout, we did, we made sure those two acre lots were 1.98 acres. There was no physically way they can go and change that from a two acre to a one acre. And that helps give protection to the city that, that current zone is a one acre, but they can't split it up into two lots, it has to be one lot. And that's what we want from this lot. And so there's-
It's got a, it does have one flat lot, just, um-
Yeah, so that first one is a flat lot, uh-
On the bottom left.
To the point, so this lot 15, the southwest corner, is a flat.
Lots are legal.
It's flat?
Flat.
It's flat. So it has a-
There's a common driveway.
A 35 foot driveway that goes down the side and access the back.
It's owned, it has 35 foot wide.
So it has an access road that runs up the property line to get to the lot at the back. And, and that kind of stemmed from Rome Avenue's bending, that right away there is bending, and to access that lot on the back, it would be difficult.
And the reason it's bending?
The reason why Rome Avenue's bending?
I meant, uh, the-
Oh, oh, so that, so we also heard some concern about traffic lights coming up the road and pointing in people's homes. And so we're like, okay, let's push the road as far south as we can and, and get the road to the south so that we weren't pointing traffic at anyone's home that's up on Rome Avenue. Thank you. And then, um, I think what other concerns are-
The other concerns were, uh, Rome Avenue itself, um, it's, uh, it's hard for us to say yes to a project that has a dirt road that's going to just take a beating.
Correct.
And then there's a fire issue, they have a dead end road right there.
So, so as far as the pavement, our, our intention is to improve Rome Avenue with the paved surface up to the development, through, up in front of the property of the development, because we don't want to split in the development either. It's a, it's an improvement for our development to go through that and have a paved road through the whole development. So as far as the fire, a, a dead end road, yes, uh, it would not be a dead end road because we're planning on putting a temporary, uh, secondary gravel access over the name, and we have those easements in place currently.
To Main Street?
To Main Street.
So are your plans with, uh, to, um, leave it open, not get it, leave it, leave it open to the gravel?
So we can do either or. We're open to whatever, some people, some of the city might want to leave it as a, a crash gate for the fire department, they need it, which they have a key to. It does mean that it's less than the 30 homes, usually, I think that's the fire code, is less than 30 homes, that you don't have to have, or that you can do a crash gate in that scenario.
Yeah, the, uh, count the homes on the way up there, I think, too, and that's where, you know, the fire becomes a concern. The other, um, issue is the, uh, future flooding. Um, one of the conversations I expressed to the developer was that this choke point, so to speak, um, where that detention basin is, um, even that lot that's on the left side of that, I'm afraid is, you know, in a, in a flood hazard area, but I guess they could take some of the dirt they dig out and elevate that.
Where's your retention?
And you're, you're talking lot for, this lot just to the west of the detention pond?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and if we're, if, uh- And we're not to the point of understanding the exact size that we need, we understand that if we have to head to the west a little more and gather up some more property for the detention, we can do that. This was just a preliminary layout of the detention pond.
Where is the first one?
It's right here, right at the bottom.
Just that little area?
This area right here.
Well, that little area, that little area is around like 3 and 1/2 acres.
Right, yeah, 3.3 acres. And, and if we need to expand it because of the size of the detention pond, we can do that when we get to preliminary plat and we have more of the engineering finalized.
Your secondary access, first one at Main Street, how long?
It's, we have a 60 foot wide easement.
Are we, did you that be a thorough way to do there?
You're saying that's, that's-
Yeah, I guess a future developer would, you know.
What is this? What's that?
No, it's, it's, there is no-
What is this? The sunny one, that's the road?
No, right now, there's no-
This, oh, this right here?
No, keep going. Yeah.
That's a drainage path.
Oh.
So we had to allocate-
And sit in a ditch?
Yeah, well, a ditch and potential road if we need to, but it was just kind of a lay, a preliminary layout of what we could do. We're gonna have to take the low point of the water flows.
Depends on how you-
Yeah, once we, like I said, this is preliminary, typically you don't show this at a, a zone change, but we understand the concerns and wanted to show what our plan was that we go forward to be understood when we were covered. Right, good.
So what, I guess what we're, we gotta get, um, on record is that, um, Travis, if you don't mind, um, is, is there a willingness to adhere to these, uh, this concept of paving Rome and, uh, having this fire exit to-
Main Street.
Main Street. Main Street, uh, the detention basin, I mean, we, we have to have a willingness on your part to be able to handle some of the issues. The one thing that I'm, um, afraid I would like to stress, John, is this is a low spot and, um, there's about, um, depends on the rain, there's, can be as much as 400 gallons of water coming right through this choke point. And that's my concern is that these homes that are right in that choke point could end up having issues and problems. And, um, I don't know what the engineering's gonna come out yet. Um, I feel like that what these guys need is some type of nod that there's a, some type of approval before we have the engineering, but we are gonna have, you know, this is their engineer, but we're gonna have our guys and son or ice who didn't study, looking at what they're engineering to determine, are we making the problem worse or we making it better? And, um, we can't ask them to go out and spend a fortune if we're not willing to, uh, say yes to it, but why do you, hear you saying that you're willing?
Yeah, well, that's a lot of what we need, we need, before we put the time in the engineering, we need to get the, the zoning changed, and then we can figure, you know, the size of the pond and, and whatnot, but like the, the street map, yeah, we're, we're wanting the, the paid road all the way up to cover the lots on the right there and then to the subdivision.
And what's, what's on through your subdivision, John?
No.
And we need to chip the, we feel, really, we're not gonna have it.
Like that, we're not gonna-
So for the residents, the, that whole part is gonna be paved going up to your, your entries, what you're saying, so it's-
It'll take our current block.
It's a win-win for residents going up that hill where you're winning.
Ooh.
And so, are you saying the paved road?
Jeez, how that is where you got home?
Does the paved road go to the end of your lot up there? Or is it the end of Rome?
It will, it will go to that, it'll go to the north part of the property.
And, um, so if, if we, um, agree to this, the, the thing that we also would require some type of a developer agreement, so this information's in the developer agreement of what we're discussing here today, are you comfortable with that?
I think we're, we're comfortable with the development agreement to understand that, you know, in those couple items we talked about, for sure.
Couple items.
Bathing Rome Avenue, getting a secondary access to Main Street and, and working on the detention basin for the development.
And then, um, the, uh, the other caveat for, for me is that in this, uh, developer agreement, we probably need to have some type of, uh, uh, the other issue that's on the, on deck is, uh, fire, uh, protection and flow, and do we have sufficient storage in our tank? I, you know, we need to figure some of that out.
We definitely need to work on that, and at, at preliminary plat stage, we will have those discussions and work through that before we finalize the preliminary plat, so we'll do enough engineering to figure out the detention pond and size, we'll work on the, the water infrastructure model to understand what we're, what our problems are.
And then, and the other, um, uh, issue, just for those that are listening too, the other hoop that they have jumped through, uh, is the state of Utah, if you do an extension to this size, all has to be approved, um, by the state of Utah. So it's not like we're just gonna nod our heads and say, okay, there's engineering that's gonna go and play here, not only from the district side of it, the town side of it, your engineers, the state also gets involved as well. And so anyway, we have a few check marks.
Is that because it's such a big, big area? Why, why?
This is what we do on any project, we don't just-
The state gets involved?
Yes. When it comes to an extension over 500 feet of the, of the water line, anything over 500 feet requires state approval.
Water line.
Right. And then we, we require water modeling on any kind of a development to show that we have sufficient flow, the pipe's the right size, you know, this isn't just lightly where we just, you know, give this guy, you know, his building permit, or town council meeting. So, anyway, so there's a, there's a lot of work to be done yet, if, if we approve this, so any questions from anybody?
I have a question for Mr. Angel. Can you tell me what plan we should turn down?
For all the reasons why you just, that you just discussed, um, can I, can we have this one conversation?
Quiet!
Public hearing right now, so, thank you.
Jeez.
Uh, our, our primary concern was that it's, it's one thing to have a conversation out in the open about what, what, what the developer's willing to do, it's a whole other thing to be able to hold them to that. What they're asking for, and we understand it, was a zone change, which once it's done, the change is made with, with no string attached to it, no legal string attached to it, just the gentleman's agreement. That's fine if that's how the town wants to proceed, but that doesn't prevent, once it's zone one acre, doesn't prevent the landowner from selling off one acre lots.
Um, our, my intent is that if we do do this, it's going to be, um, the dual zoning, uh, we have to have the, it's very, you know, exactly what- we have to have the, it's very, you know, exactly where that dual zoning is. And that, that zoning does not take an effect until we have a written agreement in, in place.
Okay.
So if the written agreement ever happens, there is no zoning in place.
If that, if, 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 if it's the wisdom of the council to make a zone change that has strings attached to it?
Oh, yeah.
That's not what was presented to us.
Yeah, lots of strings, yeah.
At the, at the planning commission, we were asked to make a zone change.
Yeah, we, we like the zone.
We can't do that based on a conversation, um, because the infrastructure is just not there to substantially change and come up with space. Can we address that real quick? So, so we agree, you know, I mean, there's a risk involved in both sides about zoning of a, yes, you could, but you still can't go sell one acre lots because you don't have a preliminary plat, you don't have those. So we still have to come through the city and a preliminary plat is typically when you introduce a lot of those, some of those agreements as part. And so that was our intention the entire time, is that we would have this development agreement that you've asked for, for these couple items at the preliminary plat stage.
And Allen's uh not as polished or, as I said, experienced. They, the preliminary plat comes right back to the planning commission again, and then a final plat comes back to the planning commission again. And so you've got two more chances to still look at this and say, this is what we, you know, bought on for. But at some point, you know, this, this written agreement has to be put into place on what we agree on.
That's, that's, that's our concern.
And then having a split zoning, because that was my worry, is that we're gonna have these two acre lots and R one zoning, that someone's gonna wanna divide and
Right.
So we, we solved that problem, you know, headlights in, getting, you know, the homes up there.
Is the request in front of the council different than the request we came to us?
No, this is probably slightly different because of conversations that they can come to us, of course, and say, what's you gonna take?
But as I read the, did I misread the agenda? This is, the request is still for R one?
Yeah, that's what it is, but that doesn't mean that that's what they're gonna get. So it's, it's, it's gonna be some that's gonna be two point five, it's gonna be a split zoning. This is in our motion, when we decide to make a motion, it'll have all this in there and
Can we pull up that map that shows the split zoning? Just scroll down, just so you're clear. So we, we listened to the concerns that we heard.
I appreciate that.
And so we, we came back with one more, it's the colored map. So then we decided to split the zoning, that the east half would be two and a half acre plus, and then everything else would be one acre. And then based on the lot land we did, we were proposing less than two acres on the lot, so you can't lot split.
That's where you said one point nine eight or something?
One point nine eight, yeah, just barely under two acres, because we want a two acre lot.
We just don't wanna be able to split that in the future.
We understand the concerns.
To create more lots. So basically, if, you know, we gotta say it, it's, we have a potential fifty seven, fifty eight acres, I'm trying to remember the exact size, but it's around fifty seven acres and we're gonna end up twenty five lots. So you're over two acres um per lot on the average. So this is a extremely low density compared to the one acre that we're putting right next to.
One of the, one of the other primary concerns that I didn't hear addressed, since you're addressing concerns that were raised at the public comments, when it came before the commission, was the potential for the, the obstruction, there's gonna be an obstruction to the view for everybody, you're gonna see rooftops. One of the primary concerns was what type of rooftops are we looking at?
And a house?
Yeah, I mean, flat roofs are a lot less offensive than So to, to address that, this is straight zone and there's no requirement of zoning to do type of home. I understand that, but you, you, you already voluntarily agreed to make, to address some of the concerns.
Well, I'm not sure that's a, but yeah, I don't wish to, you know.
I don't think we need a walkman on that.
The applicant comes in for a, for a, for a zone change, didn't come in for approval for a house or rooftop.
I understand. I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm telling you what, one of the primary concerns
Well, it was my hope, it was my hope that we could use this as a perfect scenario to understand how to be proactive to find a solution to the challenges opposed to just closing the door, saying no, no to the, to the projects at all. There are ways, and they've demonstrated wonderfully how to, how to augment some of these challenges. And I was hoping that if we could get more engaged with the planning commission, that we could see this an opportunity to learn that there are, that rather than shut the door on the projects, that we could find ways to, to augment the challenges and get these projects forward.
And one of the challenges is, is obstructive view. You understand?
It's, you're having obstructive views no matter where
No, no, it doesn't matter which rooftop you have, though, you're still gonna have an obstructive view.
But the, the obstruction, we have to keep in mind that, um, you know, whether it's whose house, wherever you wanna go, there's open space here and there that someone can do something with.
And nobody's contending that that's a
Yeah, but what, what I, my contention is, is that guy has got, um, you know, the guy that owns that, you, uh, I, you know, I've got an awesome view, you've got an awesome view, and the guy behind us, and the guy behind us has an awesome view, and that guy behind us has a right to do something with his property. If it's, I mean, we're not gonna approve a, you know, Walmart and, you know, a Home Depot or something in, in our, in that view because it wouldn't be appropriate. But to have single family homes, next to single family homes off of a, single off of a street that services other residents isn't totally appropriate.
And, yeah, I don't think you didn't hear me say any of this, anything that was brought up that has, in the comments, uh, public hearing was, um, I mean, I didn't hear anything that wasn't appropriate. These are things that people repeatedly brought up. And I, I mean, I was just simply referencing the fact that you brought it up, you addressed some of them. But we had two here.
Well, let me, let me clarify my broker statement then, because what I really, I was trying to be nice, but the, the thing that I found inappropriate was the basis of the rejection of the project.
The basis of the rejection according to the minutes when we finally get them is all of the things that you started with, which was infrastructure.
That's why I asked you first. You gave me the reasons and I just, and I felt like they were inappropriate reasons.
You think it's not inappropriate that you just
To reject the project based upon some of the things you didn't address. I do.
Yeah, but it's
That's what I've been
Well, you're welcome.
I, I, I'll, I'll disagree because um, the uh how you word things is important too. And I'm not sure it's in their wheelhouse to negotiate these items as much as the council's with us.
And that's the part that's been appropriate.
The difference is, is that we're, we have an attorney that's, you know, working with us, here's, here's how you can pull this off if, if that's what you want. It's something you didn't have access to, that helped you guys with any verbiage on anything else. I know the plan's changed a little bit, and that's because I worked with the developer to tweak the concerns of residents that we're gonna have fifty, sixty lots out there and all the stuff that was, was being said. And, and so, you know, putting this, you know, what we're, you have to agree that today what we're gonna ask differently.
Absolutely, hundred percent.
So there's no fault of the planning commission. I, and I'll go out on a limb and just say that, you know, you guys do what you wanna do, but if you, if you wanna deny this because of this infrastructure and, you know, that's okay, we'll figure it out. And I, I support what you guys did and why you did it.
And I'm not even here necessarily to speak for the planning commission, but it wasn't even in this vote that we recommended council deny the, the zone change for the reasons that we stated in the motion. And you've addressed, and you have every right to address those concerns, the things that we stated, far as I can tell, so far, at least, we, I'm hearing language addressed that I have, we'll find out when the final motion comes, because there have to be strings attached to the zone change or else it's just as
Right, it's subject to a written developer or any legal authority. That way it's, it's locked in that they, you know, with certain restrictions, so. Anyway, I, does anybody have any other comments or questions?
Yeah, this is Bev and Cory. I'm wondering whether ordinance doesn't reflect this split zoning.
This is not a trans speech for the council, all right? We let Alan speak because he's a planning commission representative, but um, Debbie or Paul, either of you have comments?
No, I think, I think the, I think the consultant for the, the builder was very clear, and there are more hoops that they have to jump through in order to make this project fit what the city needs, what, what they want. I know there's, there's always a concern, when you buy a property, what's gonna go next to you? I had, when I was building this home, I rented a house or rented a room from a friend who lived up on Foremaster Bluff, and he had two vacant lots across the street because he wasn't on the bluff. And they were so outrageous, outrageously expensive that nobody was buying them, so I enjoyed a beautiful view of Zion and everything else for the longest time. Well, somebody finally came up with money to build a house and now that he doesn't have that view. I guess what I'm saying is, is uh, I think that a landowner has, if he has an opportunity to make something nice for the community, I think that he should be allowed that within guidelines and within restrictions that we, we hold our feet to the fire. But, I mean, when I bought my house, I wasn't, I was sure, I was, I was sure that, I mean, I was uh, loved the view, and I'm thirty feet up so that nobody can block it. Now Marty's roofline blocked my view a little bit. But I'm looking at a beautiful home, so I, it, it really doesn't, doesn't bother me. But, so for the people that, that move here to have the rural area and everything else, well, unfortunately, the land around us is private property, and I think these people, if, like I said, they wanna build a nice property, they think they should be allowed to do that within the restrictions and with, within the rules that we set.
Here, here. Anybody want to make a motion?
I have one comment.
Yeah?
I understand that people have property rights, but I remember back when Michael and myself ran for office, we knew there had to be development, but we always, one of our platforms was it shouldn't be at the expense of people that already live here. And based on the planning commission meeting, it seems like the, and I know what people's public opinions are, do not just determine the whole outcome of a decision, but we need to take them into consideration.
Well
And I think, I think we have, based on what, what Marty has, has talked to the developer about, I think that, that that has taken, been taken into consideration.
Well, I want to bring up another consideration. Um, we, uh, back in February of two thousand nineteen, we were talking to Travis Holm about um, up beyond the water tanks, and he was asking for a thirty lot subdivision up there. And um, it was decided that he had to have a road that went to Main Street, and most he put in was thirteen lots. And then he changed it and says, okay, I'll just do thirteen lots then. Came into the meeting and then uh, planning meeting, and then they uh, made him still say that he was going to have to put a road into uh, Main Street, even with thirteen lots. And he got that zone changed, they approved it, and that's up beyond that. And the road that we would be installing is right where this one is, to Main Street. And so we've already approved a project with a road to Main Street off of Rome Way back in February of uh, two thousand nineteen. Debbie might remember, she's the one that made the motion on it.
Right, correct. And at that time, a lot of residents didn't come to speak out against it.
Uh, there's, there's a view, that nobody wants the traffic, nobody wants neighbors, but um, you know, it's someone's view, I mean, I think when you get a guy that's uh, buys a piece of property like that, he has a right to do something with it as well. And most of the people that are speaking out about this and are pushing against it or they're trying to pull favors from friends, and if we're gonna approve something for Travis up the hill and not here, and we're gonna approve something for Travis out on uh, SR fifty-nine, but we can't, you know, and that's potentially a couple hundred homes out there, uh, we've got Hank just left, Hotel and some homes over there, we can approve that, but we can't handle twenty-five homes up there because it might hurt someone's view. And it's, they don't own that property. That property's been for sale for years. Those people could have bought that property years ago to protect their view if it was that important to them. And at some point, you know, we just can't say, you know, there's people out there that own all of that land. And if you go, if someone wants to protect it that bad, write a check.
I have a question. So on this, with the letters that were supposed to go out to all the surrounding neighbors, did we ever get any?
Lots of them.
Were we got letters back or did they turn it down?
Nobody wants it out there because they don't wanna look out there and see a rooftop. They like seeing coyotes, but that's, it's hardly a reason, in my view, to deny a reasonable project. It's, it, it matches our general plan. Our general plan says R one, they're coming in at two acres or over that, and um, it's, they're solving the problems that we have. And they still have more problems to solve, and they're, which is fire flow and pressure and the flooding, you know, we've got a few things that we've got to, problems we have to solve, it's not, you know, slammed up for me yet. But anyway, that's my take on it, that we approved one right at the road a year ago. Uh, two years ago, I guess, that's nineteen.
I have a question. Hello?
I don't know who's talking. It's kind of a public hearing, plus I was following Debbie. Is that following Debbie?
No. Can you hear me?
Yeah, one of you guys wanna do a motion?
I'm, we're allowed by a correction.
Yes, uh, number uh, five, yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve and accept ordinance two zero two one dash zero zero one and ordinance amended zoning map A B thirteen twenty-nine to R E one zero.
And then uh, it's actually split zoning, and that's, needs to be subject to an executed developer agreement.
You don't wanna take care of that from preliminary plat level? Okay, was that?
Well, in other words, what we're trying to do is, is not give them R one, R two, because we don't have a correct map yet on that. We don't know where can be R one, where's can be R two, until we have this engineering done to figure that out.
And we appreciate that. I think we, on the stuff to the west, we can account for the detention if we need more. And so the line we proposed is everything east would be two and a half acre and everything west would be one acre.
And we're still withholding that substitute development.
I'm in my motion, I make a motion that we accept, we're gonna change ordinance to two zero two one dash zero zero one and ordinance amended zoning map A B thirteen twenty-nine to R E one point zero, and split zoning subject to development agreement.
I'll second that.
All right, wait a second. Uh, we're, yeah. So Mayor, if we could enumerate, I believe there are five total, I know that, so we could, uh, uh, conditions that were going to be put in the development agreement, if we could just state those for the record that, that the applicants are agreeing to, that would be helpful.
Want all of them in there?
Yes, and I
I've got all of them.
And so I don't know, and I was trying to count as you were speaking, so I don't know if I might
Sorry, so the ones I know
Detention basin, Rome, fire, paving Rome Avenue, access to Main Street, the secondary access, and then the, the detention basin, like, and park. And then you mentioned fire, well, we'd have to make sure, but that's like, I don't know about the condition. So no, that was going to be, that'll be taken care of on the plat.
That's the plat.
So, so just those three then.
Broadway, detention basin, and the uh, Main Street access.
Those four. And the split between one and two and a half acre, R E one and R E two point five.
Per, per the map show.
Per the map, it's included. And, and so, so the record will reflect that the applicant is agreeable to all of those.
Yeah. Let's try this again. I will amend my amendment. I make a motion that we accept change of ordinance two zero two one dash zero zero one and ordinance amending the zoning map A B thirteen twenty-nine to R E one and R E two one, two point five under the conditions that the applicant is willing to provide the asphalt for the Rome Way from his subdivision to the current asphalt, that he meets all fire, excuse me, that he meets all obligations for the detention basin and he provides a acceptable access to Main Street. So, so can I clarify that? So we're to help with the detention basin, not all obligations? No, all obligations of your development. All obligations of our development, yeah. Well, that's true. No, the detention basin, the detention basin needs to be designed to accommodate your subdivision.
Yeah, but.
And any oversight requirement city.
Yeah, yeah. As we, we talked about that, you can accommodate yours only, but that doesn't accommodate for everything that we know can come towards you guys.
So, so we want to help with the design, figuring out the size, but I don't think we're ever under the agreement that we would build, construct the entire detention basin. We will go bigger and beyond what we have, but not the entire thing is what I thought we were doing.
I think you're correct on that, but I don't know what Sunrise Engineering is going to sign off on that because we're not going to put people in harm's way. And I don't know what your design is and I haven't talked to Sunrise Engineering. Well, we'll have to, yeah, if you want to start there, then we can put this off till next meeting and, you know, and we can try and have that conversation and help throw that up. But, you know, we're, you know, we, this is subject to engineering that we have to agree that we're not causing problems for everybody else on Mount Zion Drive, that we're helping fix the problem and that we're not causing those that you're going to be building homes going to be in harm's way.
I understand.
And, and I don't know what that's going to take because I'm not an engineer and I'm not able to cock the sunrise because they don't, we don't have it designed yet.
No, and I understand that. I think what we're trying to say is that, that's why we anticipated the development agreement at primary flat after we had all the design. So to put that on that we would do the entire thing and build the entire thing, it wasn't our.
I think that's my understanding here.
Okay, we understand we got to size it, we got to design.
Help the oversize of.
Yeah, and we want to help improve it, but we can't take all the burden, but the whole town, all this one development. We want to help design it, make sure the property is sized right. Like, that's why we, three and a half acres, you know, we might have to take more acres to get more in our property.
Well, that's part of the reason for the, they're talking about the impact fee increased is what's for the pond. So if we build and design the whole thing, there'd be no reason for that impact fee for all the other divisions around.
So can I just, this is why they want to clarify. So, so what you're talking about is your anticipation was you would take care of your development, the flows from your development, any historical flows that have been that could do that property right now and that would be your responsibility.
We would, yeah, because it's by law, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but by law, we can't discharge any more than our historical flows onto anyone else. But we also want to help, we understand that there is a problem there, we want to upsize it a little, but we can't upsize the whole thing and, and take all those costs because you do have an impact fee that's going to cover some of those costs.
But just in this verbiage right now, I just want you to understand what you're saying. Historical flows, because the historical flows, you know, come from growth of Main Street and Gooseberry Mason Road comes from Rome Way, coming down that direction. It comes in three different directions, these are historical flows that are going on right now. And that's, and that's basically the problem we have to cure.
Yeah, I understand that, but historically, so typically on the development is that you just have to change any additional on top of the historical flow. We are, we're, we want to help and reduce that historical flow down, but we can't take all the burden, all of it, but we can design it and we got to work on the design of maybe a phasing of that to have a phase one of the detention pond, which includes any development and maybe there's a phase two, a full build out one, long term. Now, the good thing is a dirt burn, we can do a lot of the dirt, like build a detention pond, do a lot with that to help reduce those. Whatever we do is going to alleviate a lot of the, of the trans that's happening because of, because we are detaining it now. And in the past, it never has been detained.
All right. Marv, I see you went online there, did you want to?
Yeah.
I didn't know you were still with us here, did you want to say something?
Yeah, the, the whole meeting's been so, so invigorating that. I, I did want to just say, I think Mr. Coates is, is probably correct with the fact that, you know, he's only, typically, he's only responsible for, for the flow that he's, he's providing. But in this case, where we've got a study and we have a need and an identified detention pond there, which I did a quick calculation. If he has three and a half acres, that detention pond has to be about five feet deep, four and a half, five feet deep. Say, say six, just for the free board that you'd be necessary. So he may want, I mean, he's got to worry about, he's got to worry about several things. And it's going to be an iterative process. He doesn't want to have that four or five feet, the, the detention pond back up, the backup water into his new lots, number one. And so there's several, there's several later, engineering iteration, iterations that have to happen. We showed that area going out about another thirty percent to the east. I think he could probably make it on the three and a half acres, but he's got to, he's got to think about depths. If, if that's the case. And then, so these improvements were envisioned to be funded through NRCS or a FEMA grant and self participation mix and happen all at once. If the detention pond goes in before the channel on the right, that means the four and a half million gallons actually is more than that because there are, there is some interception of flows from the, from the east that would happen with the overall project. So I think it all, it could all be worked out, but there, from, from my point of view, I'm just telling you my initial reaction and gut check is that the depth may be, have to be worried about and the acreage, I mean, if it's, if the acreage is three and a half, then that has to go deeper. If he wants to stay shallow, he can provide more acreage.
Well, and if I end up being five acres when we get done, that's why we want to leave that option to pull over out of that next lot. We, and like I said, that was, that's kind of our rough estimate too, but we started with this, understanding we're not to that design and engineering phase to understand fully what we need to design. But we want to leave that option to the west to take out. The, the lot layout was just so you guys could see our plan, but it might forward a little bit based on the design requirement.
I just feel like that to say yes on the zone change and to vote on this, we just have to have an understanding that we need to solve this problem probably ahead of the flat stage to make sure that I'm, I'm not going to go in there and say yes to a flat that's going to cause people you're selling lots to a problem, let alone those below this. And, and that's the, the number one concern I have in saying yes at all is causing everyone, anyone, any more hardship than we already have. And we're not fixing the problem and we must leave the law.
Totally understand and our, our goal here is to, to, we understand there's a problem. And before primary flat, we will have the engineering done and understand everything that's going on, we'll work with Sunrise Engineering and figure that out at primary flat stage.
Based on his conversation, it sounds like something can be worked out. So I feel like based on the conversations we've had, we're not that far apart here.
Yeah.
So.
I agree.
My motion is not to give us, you know, my motion is, is, you know, we'll move this forward tonight, but it's under the reservation these things get adjusted. You find out that you got to move five million yards of dirt because we want you to take water off the zoning. You can always say no. But we're not going to say yes and you come back saying we want six inches. No, our goal is to not hurt anyone downstream.
And I, and our builders are just make it all, make sense. So I appreciate that you guys are interested in building that. So was that clean up motion, do you think? Just want to make sure the recorder has, has it listed there? And that the applicant feels comfortable with those, with the conditions as.
Can you state how, do you understand where we're coming from off the detention of? That we don't feel it's appropriate that we pay for everything on the detention. We're not saying that, we're saying go in and improve it even above and beyond what typically is required, but not a hundred percent to, to Mr. Wells here. I understand emphatically what you're saying. However, we're stepped into a black hole with some unanswered issues and my motion is to move you forward until, and give us time to address the black issues. If the black issues are too vague for you, and I have no problem withdrawing my motion and we can table to the time that we can put it together first. We are definitely moving forward.
Okay.
To address these issues. You have to figure it out before primary flat, is that?
Okay. Anybody want to do a second?
No second.
I have a public comment.
Well, if you change it to, can it go back to open? They don't make it.
I, we have a motion and a second. Yeah, we have a motion and a second, not a conversation, but the, let's, we have a second over here, should we do a vote? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Councilmember Cop, I believe.
Yeah, I saw that. So Councilmember Cop is not voting, she's, has a friend pick up the airport, so. We will adjourn her from this. And to, you know, to address your, your question. The answer, I forgot what it is, one of the.
Well, just, okay, if you, you're going to make the motion to change how it's zoned, if this does not come through.
The zoning was subject to a written development agreement.
So there is no zone change till you're satisfied.
Right.
Okay.
All right, I think we.
D O forces up, don't they?
Yeah, we think you did that. We got a couple more things that we're to take care of. Discussion possible action on technical planning assistance program funds, cooperative agreement. There's a written agreement with D O for this money will be out to spend on planning. And so I have a written agreement, it's in the left side of your folders and they just need your permission to actually do that document. That's what we can get some free mic and you die. It's, you don't have on there, it's that black folder. That's I, they did a revision on it, so.
I agree with that from what I read.
What's your motion?
Yeah, I agree with that. Okay, I'll make a motion that we operate, except the technical planning assistance program comes appropriately cooperative through.
And.
Well, did you?
Yeah, operates the sign.
Operates the sign, yes. I have a second.
And vote.
Aye.
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 And item nine, discussion possible action on award of work to Sunrise Engineering for planning assistance for R P and Sunrise Engineering, they actually did the work on, gave us the money and they're also the only one that responded to the R P. And the R P matches the assistance.
Make a motion, we award the work to Sunrise Engineering for technical planning assistance. Second.
Vote.
Aye.
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 And discussion possible action on regular meeting schedule calendar year two thousand twenty-one for town council of Apple Valley.
Hey Mayor.
Yes.
Could I just, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean to interrupt out of order, but it, did, were you going to do something on the ordinance for impact fees tonight?
It's on here, hundred and six.
Number six.
I missed it, I will, we'll take care of that, let's bounce back to you. So let's go ahead and on this one we're on, for your meeting schedule.
I make a motion, we approve the regular meeting schedule for calendar year two thousand twenty-one for town council, town council of Apple Valley. Second.
Vote. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And.
Number six. Number six.
That's going to be a little bit longer, let's do this. Discussion possible action on municipal billing and collection agreement with Washington County. They made an error in our last agreement of ten cents. And so we just need to approve this.
Paul, would you like to say a motion?
Well, I don't have, I don't have in front of me. Why not?
I make a motion, we approve amendment to the municipal billing and collection agreement with Washington County Special Service District.
I will second.
It was recommended that we do this in ordinance. On, on the, with the amendment, how we on it. It was also recommended that we maybe.
So we need to.
Yeah, withdraw my motion.
We'll do the next one. I've got to, you guys, we're taking a quick break.
Hey Marv, aren't you glad you're stuck around?
Absolutely. This, this beats watching, watching Korea, Korean dramas with my wife.
Then that's got to be really bad.
I guess it depends on your point of view.
Yeah, I suppose it does.
Are you hot holes on this, that direction on Rome? So if I come off, off of this road and turn that way and then go up Zion, have they buried the holes from the dirt on the side of the road? So my question is, if I bring my board, we were down and still a little of this dirt, you grab it in the back to bury the holes there?
Hold the gravel to come back here. I'll give you that permission, I'm not having authority to do so, but you're welcome anything you can do, nobody knows it out.
Okay. You know, it would be so much easier if I didn't have to try and scoop it off the sides of the road.
Yeah, what, what's your, what's your get a front loader?
Yeah, you got a front loader.
Fix the drainage problems that are in there.
Sure.
For the road.
Sure. I'm not fixing hot holes because I'm drying them.
I got a water tunnel on the carpet, dry, broke my house, it's a sinkhole.
Yeah, I saw that one. Okay.
I have to do the rocker arm because of that, that one over in front of the Cannon's house. You know, have you seen that one? I hit that thing that they would pay attention to and I think I broke my art rocker arm. Ma'am, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, no, I'm learning. I'm learning.
I just didn't want to, I just didn't want to see all your big old shit up there. I write my little bit of motion, all your, 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 your.
So Sean, we need some help on item number eleven. It's supposed to be done by.
Thanks.
Have a good night, ladies.
The municipal billing collection was supposed to be done by ordinance, we don't have one, we packed it. Can we do a motion? Get rid of the ordinance? And with this, okay, so I can explain this, Mayor. And there was, there was an email, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
All right.
No offense.
Okay, so the attorney for the solid waste district gave us a, a resolution to increase the rates and I can't remember when we did it, but it was fairly recent because they, they are. And I can't remember when we did it, but it was fairly recent because they, they are, they begin charging the new rates in February. Were required by our contract with them to increase those rates. They put, they make, they put the rate ten cents lower than it was supposed to be.
Right.
So this resolution simply corrects that, and that resolution was provided to, um, uh, to John. And I have reviewed it, and I can tell you that resolution, the only difference is the rate. And I can't remember if it's from thirty-five to forty-five.
He was, uh, he's on the fourth, and he was saying it was probably done by ordinance, but.
So, well, and you said we should create an ordinance, I, the attorney's saying, I, I.
Fay, Reverend.
Fay, Reverend, had suggested that we put ordinance in our town ordinance with, um, our rates and also by resolution with the rate increases.
I'm not, I'm not sure why Fay recommended that, and I, I could talk to Fay about that, I can certainly tell you this, that under Utah law, you can set your rates by ordinance or resolution.
Okay.
So. And if his, if the agreement with the district requires for some reason that we do an ordinance, uh, and if you could, if, Mayor, yeah, I don't know if John's on.
And I remember him saying.
John should be able to tell you right now, he should be able to look it up and tell you that. Hey, John, uh, you should pull that up, that Fay sent you, is that a resolution that he prepared or an ordinance?
Maybe Fay meant to say resolution, but I don't remember him saying ordinance.
Okay, so I, I just want to clarify.
It's okay.
Because I don't have, I don't have a pulled up for you, do you have it, sorry?
I don't, he just wrote down it's a resolution.
Okay, so if Fay provided a resolution, then we're fine, but I can tell you that under Utah law, you can set your rates under, by resolution or ordinance.
Okay, okay, back to you, back to my question, are you okay if we have heard this?
Yes, we've.
Yes.
An unnumbered resolution, basically. We, we spell this out and say that we're approving this resolution, that's unnumbered, that's very comfortable with that. I'm comfortable with that, the, uh, town clerk will give it a number right now, and we will be fine.
Sounds good.
All right.
Okay, so in that case, if I say this right, I make a motion that we amend, I make a motion, we accept amendment to municipal billing and collection agreement with Washington County Special Service District number one to an unnamed, unnumbered resolution.
Resolution. Sounds good.
Second.
And vote?
Aye.
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 And let's go back to, uh, number six, this one I wanted to put off a little bit because there's, uh, a couple of issues in there. On the, uh, item number six, discussion on ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero two, ordinance modifying impact fees. And I'm so glad that, um, Marv was paying attention, I'm sorry to keep you on the line forever. This, uh, if you spend any time on it at all, it's confusion, let's all get out. First part of this thing, on this ordinance, if you go page two, is in the white book, if, uh, if you have it, um, it's under tab number six, oh.
Yeah, I got it.
Oh, number six.
Tab number six, and it's, uh, page two. And if you, here at the very top, it says before amendment. And so before amendment, this is going to be what we currently have on our books. And I want to point out something here, number one is the culinary water impact fees. The town does not charge it, it's the district that charges some. And so let's go down to the wastewater, the page three at the bottom, says wastewater impact fees. We do not have wastewater in, uh, facilities, and that's in our current ordinance. And so we want to get rid of that, and so we go back to, um, the, the direct. Okay, so on page, um, nine on that document, it says after amendment. And so this is what we're actually approving, we're going to get rid of, that first part, this before amendment. Everybody sense it?
Yeah.
Now, on the bottom, where it says culinary impact fees, I'm, you're going to stripe all of that, and we're going to just remove it completely because we don't have any culinary impact fees. The wastewater, we're going to completely delete wastewater from that because we don't have any wastewater, and so we're going to X out page eleven, page ten. And, um, let's see. Let me just name them out here. So we have eleven, page twelve, page thirteen is gone. And the very top are visitor centers, we'll get rid of that too. The next one, stormwater, that'll stay the same. And, um, same with, um, the fire, now, fire is, um, part of that conversation that we, probably we need to have. Oh, no, no, back to page fourteen. Bottom of page fourteen, police, we want to stretch that because we don't have any police. And so that's going to go.
So we don't pay, fire's already scratched out on this one, don't mind. So we don't pay a fee for the county?
Yes, we do.
And that's not considered part of that?
So we can use impact fees in the county. We can, we can say we want to buy a police car, we can, you know, do stuff like that, but we can't, you know, so for right now, it's better just to get rid of it. And then on fire, we talked about this, um, the one question I have, maybe Marv, since you're still on, you could answer for me, is, um, because my head's rattling around, when we're talking about this project that Hank is doing, if he's putting up a log cabin hotel and, uh, you know, carryo shop and restaurant, are all of those eligible, um, impact fees to purchase that apparatus?
Yeah, if you remember right, um, Fred indicated that that apparatus, the Impact Fee Act, disallows that apparatus to be spread out to the residents, it, it's only a commercial, um, impact fee. And so. And so.
What he had in there is a, a confusion, is he had in there, um, you know, shopping centers and, you know, none of it said hotel, none of it said restaurant, none of it said, you know, and that's why.
We have the question. Is bills are made. They're just single bills.
So pretty much any commercial though, we'd be okay on it, right?
Right, and, and as long as you follow a reasonable plan on, on the, on the equivalent connection, so to speak, or equivalent, uh, commercial unit, uh, you can charge that. And if he's gonna, if he's gonna be doing stuff that's, um, that's multi-story, uh, you really ought to consider that, I mean, yeah, you got, you might, you ought to consider that, that apparatus, because you're, if you're gonna need it, and he's gonna pay for it through impact fees, then that's where, that's where that cost should be born, at least part of it.
He's also got an aerial tram going up to a second level where there's no roads. And on the top of that, he's gonna have a observatory and a planetarium and, uh, I think one other building, so I'm not sure how that's going to be able to be serviced.
Sounds like he's gonna pay a lot in the fire insurance for those.
Yeah.
There actually is a road that goes up there and, um, and that, when they get up there, there actually is a road, it's more of a, a service road, you know, that fires would use, it's not a public road. You know, so it's, it's for their internal use and. And they'll be required then to sprinkle the building and also have fire agents there, so there'll be other ways. And he said if he had to, he fired where it's supposed to keep up there if he had to. So if I remember correctly, Mayor, it sounds like the buildings that, uh, are multi-story are not going to, um, generate enough that would, uh, that you could, or the ladder track, uh, at least the ladder tracks that we've been buying lately.
They're one point two million.
Yeah, it's.
You proposing something more than three stories?
I don't think he is, I, the only thing that I'd be curious on is the backside of the golf course, because I know that he had a lockout, and I'll go with it, two floors above, so that would be a total of three on the back, but I really don't think he's proposing anything that's.
I don't think a ladder is required by total feet, because of your fourth.
He's trying to keep things.
Okay, cool.
Well, I agree with you, that's, uh, really.
But I do think, you know, we need to be looking at him absorbing and providing some fire protection in the way of, of, of that apparatus or even building, if I will.
I, I think we, uh, go with the apparatus, um, version of it. Um, so basically, uh, in a nutshell, I, I was doing some rough map on this earlier, and we're, the, in the past, um, the, the numbers that were done by, um, the previous study are similar to what we're doing today. And the council voted to, you know, chop that down, I think it's only, you know, the average, I was asking Taylor today, and she says, well, regular dollars is all they're charging. And so every time that we discount that, it means that those costs are being associated to the town, and we have to now raise, um, you know, taxes or something to help pay for that. And I, I would rather have the guy that's coming to town write the check than the residents that are living there. And, uh, so one way or another, we're getting the cost associated with it, and I think it's a smarter way to do it. And I, I would prefer to just leave it as is, it comes out about six thousand, maybe, uh, a little under seven thousand dollars, your balance, I think is about the number I came off that is our impact fee. That's half as much as St. George, and I think that's in line with, uh, you know, our ability to better, um, make improvements and take care of the needs of people.
Well, it's not uncommon, uh, uh, as, I mean, in our development, in our business, is we've had to provide grounds for fire stations, but not go fire station. But where we receive three story, we've had to buy those machines, and we've had to buy those. Um, in our case, where with the number of units that he's talking about having over there, regardless it's in three phases, it's almost a fire service district by itself, and independent of what we currently have. So I, I think you're right, spot on, I think you need to continue to move that direction and.
Are you testing the one thing, we intend to build something near Seabiscuit, right?
That, that's what I said earlier, I, I think, I think if you, I think with the amount of volume that he has over there, um, the demand for fire protection just in that canyon is greater than what we currently have today. Um, so I, I don't think it's out of reach through our development agreements and our, and this again goes back to why I wanted to have some time to go through these documents, I, I think we need to, to, I think he needs to be assessing us and inquiry those apparatuses through his development and not through our impact fees. That's my perspective, and it's not uncommon to do that.
We can investigate that, I, I would have to go back and look at the act to see. But certainly nothing would prevent you from doing, from institute adopting your fees now and studying your ninety day clock, and we can take a look at that, uh, because that's one of those win-win that we were talking about.
Yeah.
Americans have some constraints because regarding negotiator development agreement that's supported.
That's what I said.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood, Jim, I thought you were talking about the pit.
I am talking about the pit.
Okay, Jim.
One of my questions to you earlier to that was exactly that, does our current obligations in development agreement prevent us from reaching into the pit, try to, try to pull some of that, reach up and address it?
If it qualifies as public infrastructure under the act, no, and that's my, that I was making too, is that even though we've agreed that they could do that system, if you have decided that you want something different, or you weren't going to allow the bonding for that, that type of system, they can still build it, but they just couldn't use the pit money for that.
Correct.
So, so you understand exactly.
We wouldn't be able to use pit money, no, on a fire, I'm sure.
Well, let me look at the act, because it's, uh, I want to make sure that I can give you the correct answer on that.
Okay.
All right. Anyway, uh, I think that's the major ones we've had, changes, but we are going from around, you know, below nine hundred dollars up to, you know, somewhere around six thousand dollars. And, uh.
But we're still.
This is the same number that the last they came up with, and they discounted that much, which I just think was, was, puts a whole lot on the back.
You pointed out earlier, we're fracturing across the most other towns.
Yeah.
You know, and we're, we're not unreasonable in our fees, I view more, we're behind schedule on our fees. And we're just catching our fees up.
Yeah. Anyway, I think, uh, that's the only changes that, um, I've identified in there, if you guys are okay with that.
Do you make a motion?
I, so I make a motion that we, uh, approve the, uh, impact, let's see, the ordinance, can you get the ordinance number? Uh, I make a recommendation, we, uh, approved ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero two and ordinance modifying impact fees for the town of Apple Valley. And, um, with the changes noted, is that acceptable, Sean?
Yes.
And as long as we've got those changes down, we do those three. And, uh, I think that's, that's all right.
Thanks for the motion.
And vote?
Aye.
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 Thanks, Marv, for your help.
Hey, you're so welcome.
Yeah, Marv, it's good to have a seasoned veteran here. All right.
You're, you're talking about the salt and pepper in my beard?
Yes, I am.
All right, hey, thanks, we'll talk to you later.
Take care.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, we have, uh, financial statement, invoice, and minutes from November eighteenth, December sixteenth.
The minutes were adjusted, they're in, um, your.
They're in the, they're in the black one.
Yeah.
Sound a lot tense, son.
Good thing we keep up with you.
This thing ended up being five hundred pages long. That's crazy. Hey, by the way, this is what St. George does every meeting. Uh, yes. Four or five hundred pages. I feel like, I feel like I'm in St. George right now. Yeah, they start at three in the afternoon, and shots are usually getting out about nine. Yeah, we don't always start at three, but that day with the impact fees, we did start at three. Anyway, um, so someone want to make a motion on the consent agenda? Use that all in one fell swoop?
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda, items twelve, invoice thirteen, financial statement fourteen minutes, November eighteenth, December twentieth, December sixteenth, two thousand four.
Second.
Second. Aye.
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 Paul say aye?
I didn't say aye.
And, uh, okay, so reports and recommendations, announcements, uh, events committee, we do have, um, the, uh, pet clinic this weekend, Saturday, it starts at, I think, one thirty, when it take them?
Starts at one, goes to three.
One to three, and so anyone who wants to volunteer to come out, handle the crowd, we're gonna be doing it in the engine bay. Uh, because COVID, trying to give people a little more space.
I don't have on the radio, but.
And so, and so, anyway, uh, so. We'll raise a. So, anyway, that's going on, uh, planning commission looks like they're on. Fire department has to be excused, Harold snuck out. And, um, all right. So, public comments, I'll open up the, uh, meeting to public comments, anybody online who wants to make public comment? I don't see anybody on meeting themselves. Hope there's a right, there's one.
I'm sorry, am I up? Yes, you are.
Yep, you are.
Thank you. Mayor, I just want to tell everybody that, um, I respect the democratic process and everything you've been through, and I understand on the points of view that you make, and I also have a tremendous amount of respect for Travis, the work that he's done to put himself in that position. I'm not trying to deny anybody of anything or try to say that I have greater standing than anybody else, I just, I've enjoyed participating in this democratic process, and I've actually enjoyed getting to know Travis and the part of the whole thing, I hope to further have conversations with him. Um, I'm sorry for interrupting, the last thing I didn't understand is I couldn't talk.
Appreciate your comments. Anybody else have a public comment? All right, we'll go ahead and, uh, close public comments. And, uh, we don't, uh, need a closed session today, so we'll skip that one, and the last item is adjournment.
Which one will you adjourn?
Second.
And vote?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Gary, thanks you guys for all the hard work.
Thank you, see you guys later.
Thank you. Aye. All your hard work.